Good night. Tonight is Monday, April 28, 2014. I'm gonna start off by taking roll call. Looks like everybody is present. And I'm gonna invite you all to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation in its law.
Thanks for coming out on a cold, windy, rainy April evening. I'm looking for an approval of the agenda.
It's moved.
Moved and seconded. Anyone have any questions? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We move on to the recognition of students, staff, and public. First one up on our list here is Kennedy Girls Basketball Team. They took second in our state tournament. And tonight to present, I'm gonna call on Principal Andy Beaton and Coach Quentin Johnson to come on up.
Chair Bergstrom, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here. My name's Andy Beaton, Principal of Kennedy High School. We had a wonderful girls' basketball season with a talented group of athletes. And I'm gonna turn it over to their two coaches, Quentin Johnson and Leslie Phelps, to talk a little bit about the season.
Thanks a lot. First of all, this is my assistant coach, Leslie Phelps, who's, since I've got the job here at Kennedy, as far as for basketball, girls' basketball over there, has been a great help to me in coming over. Especially coming from a rival school. We had to learn how to like each other a little bit. So, you know, she's been a, I couldn't get anything accomplished with her, and I probably had a few less technicals because of her, and I wanna thank her for that. First off, you know, I have a couple of girls that just got in from out of town, playing top high-level AAU basketball in Virginia Beach this weekend. And a couple of other girls that played in a state All-Star game over the weekend. So, for right now, you just have me. And they all do appreciate the support and the outpouring of, you know, emails. I wanna share a couple later after I get done here. But I know they really appreciate all the emails and text messages and kind words that were sent to me about them. And I just want you guys to know that that news always gets to them. First off, you know, after last year's season, coming close to winning it all, you know, we had to learn a lot from that. You know, we had some adversity we had to face right after it was over, as far as some transfers that, you know, kids chose to go elsewhere for many different reasons. But I knew in fact that we still had a team that could compete. And by those girls, you know, sticking around and really having faith and being loyal to me, it made me wanna work that much harder to try to get that championship. So, we kinda had a great marriage going on with that, and we kinda stuck to that. Started out pretty good in the Hamline Tournament this year down at the Pat Patterson Classic at Hamline University, and beat two good 3A teams that, I believe, one of them made the state tournament 3A, and the other one lost in the section final. But after that, we kinda went on, you know, we had to learn about each other a little bit, and we ended up being five and four. Big part of that was we had lost Tyra Spencer, starting guard from last year, to a knee injury. And I'll get back to her a little bit later. But after that, you know, you get into conference play, we can't sulk about it because every game is tough. And, you know, I love challenging the girls because I know they need that type of learning experience to get on with their life and as an adult. So, getting into the conference season, we knew Eastview would be there twice. And, you know, the first game we played them, you know, they beat us. So, it was a tough game for me. I got a technical in that game. It's tough down there. Me and that coach, we get into it during the game, but we're great friends off the court. We email back and forth to each other. And we both respect each other's teams. I mean, we are total opposite as far as style of play, but I think that's why the games are so good. You know, and as a matter of fact, although we're leaving the conference, the Hamline Tournament, which we are invited to again for next year, has pitted us against Eastview, I believe, in the first game of the season. So, that's gonna be pretty fun to get another crack at them, you know, and not play them in conference anymore. So, they beat us pretty handily that game. You know, I thought we played well, but we made too many mistakes, and that's fine. That's how it goes with that team. They're pretty good, obviously. But we were able to go on a roll after that. You know, it was sort of a hiccup right before the next time Eastview played us at our place. We had just got Tyra Spencer back for the first time in that game, and we were kinda out of sorts and maybe looking forward to the Eastview game. We dropped one to Lakeville South, which was one of the, you know, on our quote, "to the girls", one of the worst games we've played. And maybe sometimes those things need to happen to get refocused. So, Eastview comes into our place with an undefeated record and number one in the state, and knocked off pretty much everyone, including Hopkins, off of their undefeated perch. And we played one of the best games I've seen them play since I've had them the two years. And we pretty much dominated them the whole game. And at that time, I just knew that we were back full strength as a team, physically and mentally, and I knew at that time we can beat anyone in the state. So, that kinda propelled us into a great playoff. As far as facing Jefferson first, we know them. I know them, obviously, from coaching a lot of the girls over there through their younger years. And then going on to play Lakeville South, a team that beat us and is not, were not scared of us, and they end up going down to the wire, and Kenesha Bell pulled us out of that by scoring like five points in the last minute or so. And then after that, Shakapi brought the whole community over for the section final and the sea of red. But at that time, there was nothing that was gonna stop us, and we pretty much dominated them. And I was very confident going into that game, and the girls really delivered. We got a fairly good seed in the state tournament. I was confident as far as our draw. We were on the other side of Eastview. That's what we wanted, that's what they wanted. It ended up happening. I felt good going into the game. We had a good game plan, you know, with the help of my coaching staff. And we pretty much dominated that game until that last minute. Of course, I'm a coach, I'm a competitor, I used to be a player. Of course, I think it got stolen from us, but that's just the way it is, and that's how basketball is for sure. But one thing that I'm very proud of is that the way we grew in that one year. We led that game up until the last minute, and it was one of the hardest things for me to do. I still feel it today. I know the girls do. They can call me anytime they want, and they all reach out at one time or another as far as that. And I know it's gonna make them stronger. And I wanna thank you guys for being in attendance and so forth. So, at this time, I just wanna share before I go here, a couple of emails that were sent to me by people that I've never seen before and know. And, you know, it just, you know, it got me emotional when I was reading them 'cause it's kinda what I'm all about as far as, you know, other than basketball. It's just trying to help young kids grow into mature adults. So, the first one, real quick here. "Hi Quentin, just wanted to thank you for raising the trophy after Saturday State Basketball Tournament. What you did meant so much to the fans. As a former student athlete, I am too familiar with winning and losing. In seventy-seven, I traveled with my teammates to Albuquerque, New Mexico, with the intent that we would break the indoor four-by-four-hundred world record. My teammates dropped the baton before the stick reached my leg on the relay. However, in seventy-eight, we returned and broke the world record. We held the record for twenty-four hours as a result of this performance and another world relay record. I was offered a contract to run for Nike for seven years. Lastly, I experienced another great loss as a finalist in the eight-hundred meters in the eighty Olympic track and field trials in Eugene, Oregon. President Carter issued an ultimatum that the United States would boycott those Olympics. My dream of being an Olympian died. It's true, this year's team will always remember finishing second. The audience, however, will remember you raising the trophy. On Saturday, I watched you set the bar of excellence and good sportsmanship." And lastly, this one really got me. "Congratulations on your effort at the girls' state basketball tournament this past week. I must admit, I really don't follow high school sports, but did this year because my nephew played on a BBA team. I watched the final boys' basketball where Hopkins was defeated. I was saddened to see how disrespectful some of the players were by taking their second-place medals and simply dragging the second-place trophy to the bench. People around me commented, where was the coach to show them how to be gracious losers? So, I got the basketball bug after that. And once again, I tuned in to the girls' basketball game last Saturday night and saw the last-minute defeat of your team. I could see how devastated the girls were. I held my breath when they got the second-place trophy because I worried it would be a repeat of what I had witnessed from the Hopkins Boys team. But then you stepped in and held that trophy up high. It brought tears to my eyes as I thought, number one, there's a coach who was modeling for his team's gracious losing; number two, there's a coach who values the fans that have come out to support them by proudly displaying that second-place trophy; and number three, there's a coach who celebrates for all the girls have done and really, really cares about young people. Thank you for affirming for me the importance of adults guiding our youth today." So, I just really felt I wanted to share that with you guys, and I'll finish up here 'cause I know you guys got a big agenda. And I just wanna thank you.
Ms. Phelps, is there anything you'd like to say? All right. Thank you so much for coming. Great season, guys. Let's see, I think we have something that has something to do with Kennedy next on the agenda here. So, Andy Beaton appears to have earned an award here, Hennepin Division Principal of the Year. So, I have something I'd like to read if I may.
Please.
Andy? You might wanna take a chair, this one's a little long. I'll go as quick as I can. You can, you can. It's very complimentary. "The Minnesota Association of Secondary School Principals, MASSP, has selected Andy Beaton, Principal of Kennedy High School, as Principal of the Year for Hennepin Division. The state of Minnesota has broken up into eight divisions, with the two largest divisions being the metro area's east side, or Capital Division, and the west side, or the Hennepin Division. These two largest divisions include the southern schools thirty miles south, all of the suburbs, Minneapolis, St. Paul, and the northern schools thirty miles north. As one part of the rigorous nomination process, there were comments submitted from Kennedy High School staff, students, and parents that seemed to highlight a recurring theme, that Principal Beaton transformed the high school into a vibrant learning community. He believes all students can be successful and has created and supported programs and initiatives that eliminate barriers and lead students to that outcome. He is a change agent. During his time at Kennedy, Mr. Beaton has led a variety of student achievement initiatives. Under his leadership, Kennedy has improved its Minnesota comprehensive assessment scores as well as the Minnesota Multiple Measurement Ratings, which measures growth and proficiency rates, achievement gap reduction, and graduation rates. His efforts also helped to increase student enrollment in honors and advanced placement courses. Mr. Beaton will be recognized at the MASSP Summer Leadership Conference. He now will be considered for Minnesota's Principal of the Year. However, we won't find out those results until fall. Also, MASSP has named Kennedy High School's Star of Innovation Silver Star Award winner for the school's blue and gold support teams, which work to narrow the achievement gap. And Andy, I'm sure in your notes, you'll help us understand what, a little bit more about that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, thanks for the invitation this evening. It's really wonderful to be recognized by your peers and the Principals Association. But for me, the acceptance of the award is really for the whole school. So, it's a benefit for me, but also the recognition of the really outstanding work that we're doing at Kennedy with a great team of administrators, teachers, support staff, and just fabulous kids and families. So, it's really great that the word is getting out about the quality work that's happening at Kennedy. So, it gives me pleasure to accept that award on behalf of the school. So, with that, the blue and gold team, there's an award that goes out each year related to innovation. And Kennedy's a previous recipient of it for academic seminar, which is another invitation, another innovation that we had to give student support during the school day, to get work done, to get extra help from teachers. The blue and gold team is a, really a student support team made up of counselors, administrators, social workers, school psychologists, a learning lab teacher, student advocates. And it is an ongoing, real-time data gathering group in our building, divided by alphabet, to try to find out what are those barriers that are preventing students from getting the success that they want? Academic barriers, behavioral barriers, social-emotional barriers. So, I think the change that's happened through that innovation is that we're able to identify students that need extra help, need extra support, provide the right medicine when possible, whatever that might be, and be able to put together really quick action plans. So, it's made a difference. It's made a difference in our data about how students are performing with failure rates plummeting, with the achievement gap closing. So, it's really been a positive. And so, this is not just about me, but kudos to all of those teachers, counselors, and support staff that are involved in that program. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Andy, for all the work that you're doing. I know my wife and I are excited to send our son there next fall, so we know he'll be in good hands. All right, let's see. Next up, Human Rights Commission Diversity Day T-shirt logo design winner. In the crowd tonight, Emily Jansen, City of Bloomington Human Services Division Program Coordinator. Has a young lady that she's going to tell us about.
Hello, my name is Emily, and I work in the Human Services Division with the City of Bloomington. And annually, the City of Bloomington's Human Rights Commission, along with the district's Office of Educational Equity, co-sponsors the Diversity Week events. The events began today, April 28, and will go through Friday, May 2. As part of Diversity Week, students participate in cultural booths, information booths, as well as a peace run that will go from Kennedy High School to Jefferson High School this year, and a keynote speaker, who this year is famous Dave Anderson, the founder of Famous Dave's Restaurants. And he will speak to overcoming obstacles and going from the bottom of his high school class to earning his master's degree with, from Harvard University without even having an undergraduate degree. So, he will be at the high schools Friday, Friday morning at Jefferson High School and Friday afternoon at Kennedy High School to speak to the students. Also, as part of Diversity Day, students were encouraged to submit designs for the T-shirt logo. Each year, we ask students to design based on creativity, originality, and also incorporating the themes of peace, equity, and diversity. So, for the fifth year, the Bloomington Human Rights Commission was asked to judge these submissions. Tonight, I would like to recognize Shiler Waderski, who is here with us. Shiler is a junior at Jefferson High School, and she is this year's winner of the Diversity Day T-shirt logo contest. And last week at the city council meeting, Shiler received her prize of a $100 certified check from the Richfield Bloomington Credit Union, and also a gift card from Chipotle for a family of four. And we have her design here as well.
Shiler, you wanna tell us a little bit about that design? Maybe you can tell us a little bit, just what you told me earlier. Just whisper into the microphone.
Well, so the stuff in the middle is one in every language that I could find. And some of it is also unity. And there's also like symbols in there that represent peace. Like I have the transgender symbol, the Jewish star, the universal symbol for peace. So, all that stuff, so yeah, that's what it is.
And this came together pretty quickly, you told me?
Yeah, I did it like the weekend before it was due 'cause my friend came up to me, he was like, "Hey, we don't have any submissions. Do you wanna do it?" And I was like, "Well, I might as well give it a try, so..."
There you go, it never hurts to try. All right, thank you so much. Great job. Kinda fun to look at that and see all the different languages. All right, so let's see. I'm looking out into the audience. Do we have anyone here that wishes to speak to the board on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay. All right, are there any high school seniors here that are looking to fulfill a requirement? Part of our government requirements is that students come and sit and listen to a governing body. Can go to city council or school board. Doesn't look like we have any seniors out there tonight. All right, then we move to the Part A. I'm looking for a motion to approve as is.
It's moved.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Let's see, we're moving on to Part B. Joint Powers Agreement with Minnesota State Colleges and Universities. Who would like to read that one?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It resolves the School Board of Independent School District 271 through entering into a two-year joint powers agreement with Minnesota State Colleges and Universities, Minsco, for the Dimensions Academy High School program located at Normandale Community College for the 2014-15 and 2015-16 school year.
Second. Moved and seconded. Rod Zivkovich, Executive Director of Finance and Support Services is here to answer any questions anyone has.
Chair Bergstrom, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. This is part of, as the resolution states, part of the startup of the DA High School. This is the first cohort that will be going through. So, it's their ninth grade year being next year, and then their 10th grade year going the following year. As the program continues, there'll be a similar resolution each year for the next cohort.
All right. Looks like we're good with this resolution. Let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you, Rod. We will keep you at the table and go for the bid awards for the elementary school additions and improvements. Who would like to read this one?
Mr. Chair?
Director Sorum.
It be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 accepts the following bids for additions and facility improvements at Hillcrest Community School, Normandale Hills Elementary School, Olson Elementary School, Poplar Bridge Elementary School, and Ridgeview Elementary School for a total of $1,452,035. And it goes on to list thirteen different subcontractors that will be involved in the reconstruction and/or additions and improvements. And we hereby authorize administration to enter into contracts with the above vendors to accomplish this work.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Rod, what can you tell us about this?
This is part of both our all-facility planning and our moving to full-day kindergarten programming of adding an addition at Normandale Hills, and then making other modifications at the other elementary schools.
Anyone have any questions for Director Zivkovich? I understand we're gonna, we're gonna start as soon as school's out.
Yes, it's gonna be a busy summer.
The trucks will be waiting. Okay. All right, yeah.
Well, Mr. Chair, just another clarification. As we've read it at meetings beforehand, where we've done some other construction packages, it does call for a variety of subcontractors that they're expert areas for windows and tile, acoustic ceilings, painting, and case work, of which we did receive bids for each of those amounts, and then took the most appropriate bid.
Yeah, we do have those bids attached. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rod. Third up on Part B is, I think we have some second readings of policies. So, we're looking for, the first one is Second Reading of Policy 102. We have someone to, yes, Director Steigl.
It be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the second reading of revised policy 102, equal educational opportunity.
Second. Moved and seconded. This is the second reading, so we've all had a chance to look this over. Anyone have any questions before we vote? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, Second Reading. Now we move on to Policy 202. Second reading, Revised Policy 202, Board Elections. Who would like to, Director?
It be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the second reading of revised policy 202, Board Elections. Second.
All right. I got Tom moved and Rick seconded. All right, this Second Reading, we've had a chance to look this over. Any conversation before we vote? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. We move to Revised Policy 208. This is Board Policies. Would like to read this one. I thought you were raising your hand a second there, David. Yes, Maureen.
It be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the second reading of revised policy 208, Board Policies.
Second. It's a tie. All right, moved and seconded. I'll give that one to Tom. Any conversation on this before we move to vote? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. And we get down to 208-1, which is... Let's see, who would like to read that one?
Mr. Chair?
Director Sorum.
It be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 approves the second reading of revised policy 208-1, 208.1, Regulations.
Second.
All right, Jim and Maureen. I'm gonna write these down. All right, Jim and Maureen, I'm going to write these down. All right, any conversation on this one?
Well, just typically when we've approved all the other policies, they've just been policies themselves, general policy statement about policies of the district. But this one is regulations, which is the next level down below a policy where it talks about some of the regulations involved in the policy 208, board regulations. So, it's just an additional regulation reading.
We're digging through all of them. All right. Any conversation before we move to vote? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And then this last one is for... Administration Procedures Research. Yeah, Nellie. Did you have your hand raised?
No.
Okay. I don't think we're doing anything with this one, all right?
Is there any action on this one?
No, this is information only.
Administration Procedures.
There you go. Well, we went through that one quickly. All right, now we move to the portion on the agenda where we have board member reports. Anyone have anything they'd like to report? That they've been busy with since our last meeting? Yes, Director Sorum.
Sure, I'll start out, then I can get, I can, that way I can have all seven of the activities that I belong to out before other people do it. No, just a couple of them, because so many of us were so busy last week with a variety of MSBA classes and seminars. But one thing I did want to highlight, and it's too bad, Andy Beaton left, because it was a great, great Thursday at Kennedy High School where it started off in the 2:00 where we had a career fair where we had a bunch, maybe, I don't know, 20 vendors or 20 companies that came in and had some information tables about opportunities for young people from high school. And so, we talked about various industries that were available to them, agricultural, technology, manufacturing, medical, and so forth. So, it was a good two-hour session where the students came from their classes to ask us about it. And that at least piqued some interest and curiosity for some of the students. And I asked one of the counselors after the class, you know, this is really good. You know, I hope some of them had answers. And she said, well, actually, we start doing this about 9th or 10th grade where we promote various industries and opportunities for students. And I said, so this is just their last year of getting some additional help and information from the various companies. And then after that was a resource, Community Enrichment Fair, where they had all kinds of vendors down in the cafeteria. This was going on while there was conferences at the school. And so, there was an opportunity to go down into the cafeteria and see about how many enrichment opportunities or human resource activities that the organizations that Bloomington has with its agencies and with the city that are opportunities for families to avail themselves to. And so, it was another great opportunity to see a lot of people participating in that. So, this just once again reinforces the amount of effort that we see between the city and the schools in making sure that our community is aware and that students and families can take advantage of so many rich opportunities. And then we did go to the MSBA sessions that I'll let the other colleagues talk about.
All right, but before we get too far, I noticed we had three students walk in. And I'm curious to know, are you here for your government class? I'm seeing heads nodding. Is it possible that you thought the meeting was starting at 7:00 this evening? Okay, not trying to single you out, but what I'm going to do is single you out. And if you'd like to come on up to the microphone and just tell us what your name is, what school you go to, and who your teacher is, and what class that is, we'd love to hear from you. So, we do have some agendas that you can have signed. We'll ask that you stay in at least for an hour. And we do have a study session afterwards, so your trip down here wasn't wasted. So, let us know who we are.
All right, I am Patrick Dos, and I'm in 12th grade at Jefferson. And my teacher is Mr. Schramm in Government 12.
All right, Mr. Schramm.
And I'm Matt Backus, and I also have Mr. Schramm for a teacher for US Government at Jefferson.
All right, Mr. Schramm, had two students show up tonight. Okay, now we can, does anyone have, who wants to share next? Director Oliva.
At the Community, the CSAC, Community Education Services Advisory Committee Meeting, we met at Veep. And we had an opportunity to tour the facility, their new facility that they have. They share it, I think, with Human Services, Hennepin County Services. And one of the things they had pointed out to us is that they serve, or they give out about 10,000 pounds of food a day. And so, I was pretty surprised with that. And so, this food drive that we're doing now with the district, it really does make a difference. And if we raise, I think, last year, between 60,000 and 70,000 pounds of food, that translates into about a week's worth, a little over a week, of food that they can hand out. What was next? Oh, we did have the MSBA Phase 3 training. And one of the things that stuck out is, Director Stagoff mentioned last time, as you go through these policy reviews, they have a list of some that they suggest that you go through every year because they say the legislation changes often. And then they have two that they say you're supposed to check every year. So, I was going to share that with the administration. So, I had Ms. Bunkold make a copy so I can hand those off. And then also, our youth advisory committee met on the 21st prior to the last study session. And I put together a few notes that we came up with regarding that. And so, if I could have a couple of minutes to share what Nellie, Jim, and I had come up with.
Sure.
One of the things was mixing the middle school and the high school students together. We felt that they sort of have different needs. So, we thought going forward, we would do two meetings with each group. So, have a fall meeting and a spring meeting, each with the middle school and the high school. I came up with some tentative dates that we could do that. I'm not sure if we need any board actions to change the schedule or if we just say this is what we're doing. And then that's just what we do. We had also thought that it's important for the board to have a role in the Veep and the food drive that we're doing. That should be its own separate meeting instead of rolling that in with the youth advisory committee. So, possibly what we'd end up with is five meetings next year. So, it'd be the two youth advisory, or the four youth advisory committee meetings with students, and then one separate one just for the students involved in Veep. That would allow us to focus more on the school issues. And then Veep would actually have a better opportunity to share at the meeting that they're at. They wouldn't be cut short because we had other items on the agenda. And just a couple of other things. Try to encourage administrators to help select a variety of students from all grade levels. Find ways to help students feel more comfortable sharing with the board. Help students understand the responsibility they have when they join leadership teams. So, it could possibly be if they join the student council, they could say part of this would be participating in these groups. One of the action items that the students brought up was that they would like, let's see here. The middle school students had said that they would like maybe some more help with transitions. So, I know that there's a, something that we do where we'll have middle school students go down to elementary schools and sort of talk to the 5th graders about what it's like to be a middle schooler. They thought maybe some sort of mentorship program, if there was some way that we could do something like that with high school students coming to talk to the 8th graders on transitioning to high school. They would like to see something like that. Another thing that they brought up was being able to do a survey or some sort of evaluation of their classes and their coursework. And I know that we have a student survey that we do, but they wanted to have maybe more of a say in what they're doing. One of the examples is we had our two high school students, they didn't like the foot classes. Well, a lot of people love the foot classes, but they wanted to be able to have their voice heard that, you know, this wasn't right for me. And they wanted to have a venue to share their thoughts. And we know that there's going to be issues involved with that. But, so our recommendation is that at some later point, the administration could maybe look into that more, something, a meaningful student survey. And so, yeah, and then the last two things were the students, we had talked about, we asked the students why they achieve versus why they struggle. A couple of the things that stuck out were class size. One person noted that they had 36 in their math class. They also said that there's a lot of distractions in class from kids that are maybe texting when they're not supposed to, or they're surfing the internet when they think the teacher's not looking. Said that's a distraction for their entire class. So, maybe we need to look at, is there some other classroom management things, tools that we need to go in? And then they said they achieve when they feel like they're being encouraged by their teachers, when it's obvious that their teacher enjoys being there, and they really like their Chromebooks. So, that ends that report.
All right, thank you. Anyone have anything else?
Can I just add a conversation at my table?
Sure.
During one of those, they talked about obstacles to achievement. And they said that sometimes students just get, when they get behind, they just feel like they can't get caught up in their work, and they feel like it's piled on, and they get behind. But the other interesting part of that was is they also said that a lot of students feel like no one cares. And I thought that was a really interesting thing, whether they get it, get done or get caught up. So, that was kind of insightful to me.
Yeah, one of the things that we noted in our, when Nellie, Jim, and I met, was that not only was there not enough time to get through all the subjects in an hour that we want to get through, but an hour also wasn't enough time to summarize everything that we talked to over the course of two days. So, thanks for adding.
Okay. Anyone else? Go for it.
So, last week I was able to go to the kindergarten program over at Wasperin Elementary for, they had a program called Pancakes for Breakfast, which is where the principal, Mr. Wilkins, reads a Tommy DePaola's book, Pancake for Breakfast. And if you've ever read the book, you'll know that there are no words in the book. So, the reader has to make up a story, which was very entertaining, and the kids loved it. And I was able to take my five-year-old son with me because, you know, when you're a stay-at-home parent, wherever you go, you've got to take your kids with you. And it's so nice to see at that age, because five-year-old, he just jumped right in there and with a class, raising his hand, like he'd been there all year. And then when we had pancakes, he was able to eat three pancakes, even though he just had lunch about an hour previously. So, I'm guessing he got my appetite. And also, this last weekend, we were able to do the MSBA training. And that was really a lot of fun, was we were able to carpool down there. So, on Friday, Rick, Jim, and I carpooled. And on Saturday, it was Dick and Jim and myself, they were able to carpool. And on Saturday, they were doing the community engagement. And our very own Radiance guest was one of the presenters. And she was talking about what she's done in the past and what she's doing in Bloomington. And she had all those school board members and superintendents across the state sitting on the edge of their seats. And a school board member from St. Paul got up and asked her, you know, if she can come work for them in the summer. And she wisely said, well, you should either talk to my employers and one of the tasks. And of course, you know, I said, no. But it was a lot of fun to see, to share with the state all the great things that we're doing with community engagement. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Chair, while he's talking about that, can I, as we went through, and there's just, a lot of state districts were there. And so, it's great to interact with so many different school districts and other board members. And so, part of the exercise that we had, we found out from Robbinsdale, St. Louis Park, and Richfield, who will be in our new conference coming up, that we wanted, they have different Monday night meetings for their school boards. So, we wanted to kind of do an exchange at different times for some of the board members to go there and have them come here, just so that we can network and interact a little bit more than we have in the past. I know years ago, we used to do that when we had them on different nights of the week. But now, everybody seems to be going to Monday nights. So, it's just a matter of doing that. But through the discussions with them all and found out that we're really proud to be from Bloomington and blessed to be from Bloomington because of so many programs that we already have in place that others were trying to establish. And so, we were definitely found to be a good resource on it. And we naturally thank our community for helping out and participating in that, as well as our superintendent, who had done so many of these things for us. So, all in all, it was a very positive experience that we had. And I'd like to bring that information back. And we'll share it with our community later on in the study session, I'm sure.
All right, anyone else before I, yeah, Don?
My Safe and Drug-Free School Committee did not meet this week, so I don't have a monthly report from there. But the Special Education Community Advisory Committee, the nominations for those special caring awards are all done. And everyone will be honored at their banquet tomorrow night. So, that will be exciting time. I also attended this week the Minnesota Department of Ed's, the electronic IEP work group that I'm participating in. I was really glad to see that they have a great group of people. And I'll tell you, those Department of Ed facilitators moved a huge group of us through a lot of work quickly. They really did a good job of moving that meeting along. And I also had the pleasure of attending carnivals Friday night in the district. So, I also dragged two of my children along to visit with their teachers at their elementary at one of them. So, that was fun for them. But I attended at Westwood and Oak Grove and Valley View Carnivals. It looked like there was great time across the community. I have to say, though, Valley View definitely wins for having the most babies and small children. There's strollers and babies and tiny babies everywhere there.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, Nellie.
Yeah, I don't have much to report this time. But I am going to go to Phase 4, same training you went to. No carpooling for me this time. Looks like when I'm the lonely one this time. Since, you know, family engagement, since, community engagement seems to be such a hot topic, it was just full by the time I went in to register. It was totally full. So, now going to St. Peter on Friday. And I'll have something to report on in the next meeting.
Good.
Forgot one thing.
Yes.
Also tomorrow night, because it's on the same night as the Special Ed Advisory Banquet. But there is also the presentation here in this building on Let's Talk About Transition, and it's community conversations about transition services for individuals with disabilities. And it's at 6:30 in this building tomorrow night.
Lots to choose from, always seems to be lots going on. All right. Anyone else? I also had the opportunity to attend the Pancakes for Breakfast. I went to the, for the early show. And this is, for the TV audience, this is a pancake with syrup and butter. And it's signed in there. And it was a lot of fun to listen to the principal read a book that indeed does not have any text. Also, attended a District 917 study session. And not surprisingly, we were going over goals for the district. Had a chance to visit our community services offices over at Metro South Building, which is the old Lincoln High School. Had a great conversation with some of the staff there about the upcoming graduation. And that'll be June 12th, I believe. That's a Thursday, am I right? Yeah, that's always, that's always a really, really uplifting event. And I look forward to that. As Don mentioned, the carnivals were Friday. I had an opportunity, with the blessing of my wife, who happens to be sitting in the audience tonight, to go visit five different carnivals. It started with Valley View Elementary, had some fabulous tacos there. Went over to Normandale Hills. I purposely stayed away from the food there. Not that it was bad, but I was already full. Went over to Ridgeview and talked myself into a slice of pizza from Fat Lorenzo's. And I was moving slow after that. Headed over to Westwood and had some mini donuts. And I was crawling after that. And I made my way over across the parking lot here to Oak Grove Elementary and looked for a chair to sit down. And as soon as I sat down, I won a prize in the bingo room. So, it was a fun, fun evening. And I really want to highlight... So it was a fun, fun evening. And I really want to highlight the volunteers that helped make those events possible. The staff, of course, is there, but our volunteers, the parent volunteers, they're all signing up. The signup genius is, is going full blast on before Carnival Week. And they just, we really just couldn't make those things happen without our volunteers. So thank you so much for doing that. Also had the opportunity to attend Phase Four with Tom and Jim. And Radius guest stole the show in the afternoon. She's in the back row here tonight, hi, Radius. A lot of people were interested to hear what she had to say. And they're interested in the material, but also the presentation. She does a wonderful job sharing. And we, like Jim said, we have a lot to be proud of here in Bloomington. Also want to say that I had a chance to sneak over to the Jefferson Student Council Meeting last Thursday morning at seven o'clock in one of the science rooms. There were thirty-five kids. And I was, I was pleased, but not surprised to see that the, most of them were on time. The Schoen, Schoen's, I'm sorry, Snitzer, yes, he, he's the, he's the teacher that facilitates those meetings. He took attendance. I assume that it was the attendance and not the donut holes that brought the kids in there. But anyways, it was interesting. They went over their monthly calendar and, and all the things that needed attention. There were lots of hands raised for who's going to handle this, who's going to handle that, who's going to take care of this. It's nice to see, see that happen next Thursday in the afternoon. I'm going to try and get over to Kennedy's Student Council, and they do theirs in the afternoon. So I'm going to go over there. I also want to say thank you to the members of the public who have started to feel more comfortable sharing. So when I'm out in the public, walking around, wherever I am, I try to make myself available for comment, as I know do all my other coworkers. But people are starting to respond. They listen, they learn, and they share. And it's a great way for us to interact with the public, because you're not always able to come out tonight. I know there's far more people watching on TV than there are here in the audience. So just want to say thank you for all that. And that's, that's my report. Superintendent, report?
I have two items. Thank you. First, the administration requests a motion to establish a closed session of the board to discuss negotiations, proposing a May 12th meeting at five-thirty.
Some of.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all right. May 12th. Five-thirty. Yeah, we need to vote on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The second item is at Olson Middle School last week during one of lunch breaks, a student was choking on a piece of food. Assistant Principal Brenda Becker quickly responded and applied the Heimlich, dislodging the piece of food. So kudos to her for quick and successful action.
All right.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. Move to the other portion of the agenda. Anyone have anything else they would like to fit in here? All right, we're looking for that all-important motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, Don, you got one in. Moved in seconded. All right. Meeting is adjourned. We'll take four or five minutes, and then we'll come back for the study session. Seven twenty-eight on my trusty computer. First up on our agenda is the English Language Learners Pathways and Mobility Analysis. And why don't we have, have you introduce yourselves to us?
Chair Bergstrom, Superintendent Fujitaki, and Board Chair, Board Members. My, my name's Dave Heistad.
Eric Melby, Director of Student Services.
I'm Beth Singlin. I'm the E.L. Supervisor for the district.
I'll be talking briefly about an analysis that the Minnesota Senate asked for. Our Representative Wicklund from Bloomington and Chair Torres Ray asked if we had any information about mobility among English language learners. And so we scheduled, after doing that presentation, we scheduled for the board to hear the same presentation. As much as possible, I'd like to do that, so you don't hear about a presentation that you haven't seen. In fact, I'd like to bring you the data before it's presented someplace else. But this was a well-received presentation on the pathways to graduation. And just a little bit of background for them and, and for those that may not have seen this presentation before. The purpose of the presentation, obviously, was to look at continuously enrolled English language learners versus students who come in new to the district or leave early. And, and so to do this kind of analysis, we use this fabulous longitudinal database that we have in Bloomington, where we can go back ten, fifteen years if we want to and see the progress of students. And then fit it into the pathways to graduation that everybody here is very familiar with. Some of the legislature were kind of wishing they, they had something similar for, for Minnesota to show the, the the real goal of creating a dynamic, personalized learning plan that leads to college and career readiness. So the way the, the pathway analysis was begun was really to start with the end goal. To look at what it takes to, to get into a very select college, like Carlton, for example. Get into a select college like the University of Minnesota, or a four-year kind of basic college, or a two-year college. And then work back from the scores that we have on seniors and juniors on the ACT to how they do in seventh grade on the MAP test, how they do in third grade in reading, how they do, you know, in sixth grade in, in algebra. We actually brought it all the way down to age three. So we now have linkages between the preschool screening assessment that's in age three, to the kindergarten assessment in kindergarten, to the third grade reading, moving all the way up. And, and so you've seen pictures like this that I call the rainbow. And basically, the rainbow indicates what score you'd have to have on the, the measures of academic progress, abbreviated MAP. That's our bread and butter assessment in Bloomington and throughout Minnesota. You know, I'd say two-thirds of the districts use the MAP test because it provides this very accurate information about student progress, how much learning takes place. And in this case, we've aligned it then with these ACT benchmarks and information that we received from the state of Minnesota on what are the typical scores for, for kids who get into like Carlton or get into the University of Minnesota, et cetera. Well, on this particular slide, what I looked at was a group of students, English language learner students who started in kindergarten and in two thousand and six, and were continuously enrolled all the way to two thousand and ten. And their achievement is indicated on this slide with the black diamonds and the solid black line. And you could see those students in second grade started out kind of between on track for two-year and on track for four-year college. And between second and fourth grade, they moved up so that they were even closer to the four-year college readiness. So students continuously enrolled in our English Language Learner Programs. In this case, there were sixty-four students who started in kindergarten and went all the way up through fourth grade, did quite well. The dotted line right underneath it was the old MCA two proficiency standard. And so they were right on, on track for proficiency by the time they got to fourth grade. Then the question was, what about the kids who weren't continuously enrolled? And so I chose two, two points in time, second grade and fourth grade. I took the average of the students who either came in after kindergarten or left before fourth grade. So that's what I'm calling mobile in this, this analysis. And those students were way lower. And so in general, the students who come into our district have much more needs, especially in literacy. And even if they've had services in other districts, they tend to be much lower and present a challenge to our, our, you know, esteemed colleagues here in terms of how do we, you know, work with students who come in with such low language? And it was true in fourth grade as it was in second grade, that the students who weren't continuously enrolled were not on course for even getting into a two-year college. So, so that was very interesting information. And then I decided to carry the study out for seven years and see, you know, what is, look, does it look like for continuously enrolled, the black line with the diamonds on it? And what does it look like with mobile students? Kind of the purple Xs there. And again, you know, out in seventh grade, the students who came in new or, or left early were significantly below that line on course for two-year college. And I did see that in between sixth and seventh grade with this cohort, there was just a little flattening of the achievement line. So one of the things that, that Eric and I have talked about is, you know, let's keep an eye on this to see if we have kind of a middle school slump with some of the students if they're, you know, have been making good progress. This is just one cohort. So we, it's something we're going to keep our eyes on to make sure that these students continue to make progress once they get to middle school. Then here's for free and reduced lunch, price lunch students. Free and reduced price lunch students who are also English language learners started out below the, the dash line in second grade, pretty close to on track for two-year college, and made continuous progress all the way to seventh grade, and actually were quite close to on track for four-year college. Again, a very promising trend line for those kids that stay with us in Bloomington for that period of time. For the students who were mobile students, who came in after kindergarten, left before seventh grade, again, you see they're below the on-track for two-years. So with both of these analyses, the four-year analysis and the seven-year analysis, it's clear that we have a challenge with our mobile ELL students. When you look at proficiency, and, you know, we talked last time that, that I presented. When you look at proficiency, and, you know, we talked last time that I presented about the change in the proficiency levels for reading. The new reading test now, you have to be above grade level to be proficient, whereas the old MCA two proficiency level was more like at the thirty-fifth percentile. Well, if you look at these kids after five years in the program, ELL program, only fifteen point six percent were on track for these very high standards above grade level. By the time you get out to year seven, you're up to thirty percent. So, there's a challenge in reaching these very high Common Core standard levels of literacy, even within seven years. And we only get funding for five years. So, this is one of the things I discussed with the folks at the legislature is, you know, if we assume that all students will be up to standard in five years, we're not seeing it even with our most continuously enrolled students. And so, the old MCA two standard, we were at forty-four percent after five years and fifty-five percent at seven years. So, even with those older standards. So, you know, part of the picture is that we need continued resources for these students. And we provide continuous programming for students who haven't reached, you know, their pathways, but the state only pays for a portion of it. Then here's a pie chart that just indicates at the end of the seven-year period of time, in seventh grade, we have, you know, two percent of ELL students are on track for Carleton. Another seven percent on track to get into the University of Minnesota, another thirty percent to get into a four-year college, an additional thirty-eight percent who are on course for two-year technical colleges, and twenty-three percent who are not yet at that benchmark that where we would feel that they would have a satisfactory experience when they hit two-year college. So, we still have, you know, we have more time with those students if they stay with us. But one of the problems is that ELL students in general are the most mobile in the district. So, they have the highest mobility, and it seems like they have a fairly high impact of that mobility on achievement. These are just some of the home languages of students that were in this small study. With just the sixty-four percent of the students, you can, sixty-four students, you see a multitude of languages, eastern languages, African languages, and Middle Eastern languages. Then I talked about the work that we're doing to identify teachers who beat the odds, but also students who start out maybe not on track for two-year college, and then we follow them across time and we see that we have some remarkable achievement for English language learners. And so, I shared just a couple anonymous students. Here's a female student, Vietnamese background, who started out in second grade, below on track for four-year college, and by the time she was in seventh grade, she was on track to get into the University of Minnesota. Here's another student, Bengali, female student who kind of plateaued between second and fourth grade, wasn't making great progress, slumped back down to on-track for two-year college, and then showed this fabulous growth from fifth to sixth grade. And it kind of reminded me of, you know, when my son grew five inches and, you know, two pant legs in one year. I think this can happen with reading, too, that all of a sudden, kids really get turned on to a certain kind of literature and they just are reading voraciously. Again, my son, he discovered these books about kids that turn into animals and the animals turn back into kids and stuff. These Animorph books just got him started, and he never stopped reading after that. But he went from a struggling reader to be a fantastic reader. So, it isn't deterministic, you know, that in second grade, if you're at a certain level, that that's where you're going to be in seventh grade. With the good instruction and supports that we offer through our ELL programs, we're seeing lots of these students who make exceptional growth. And here's a student that started so far in second grade with virtually, you know, very limited English skills, who by the time they were in seventh grade were on track to get into and do well in a two-year technical school. So, these are all examples that we like to show, and then we like to tell people that all the parents can see this information on their handheld Android or iPhone, and that right now, students are taking the MAP test, and as soon as all the tests have been processed, parents can get on and look at the latest data and see if my child is still on course for the pathway that, you know, they'd really like. And then, if not, you know, to talk to the teachers, and we can all work together. We're finding that there are lots of parents, perhaps first-generation students who, you know, are really experiencing this kind of language growth, and parents and community members may not have thought this was a college-ready student. And actually, the scores are coming in, these students are on track, and, you know, we should be making plans. This year, we gave the ACT test to every student, every junior in high school, and I finally got a printout of all of the ACT scores. You wouldn't believe how many students that we have in poverty, students of color, that are scoring in the thirties, you know, on track for Carleton or Harvard or, you know, we've got a lot of success to celebrate. And so, the presentation is really about celebration of the great progress that we're making already, but also, let's have a caveat, a caution, let's watch this middle school so we don't have a middle school slump. And then, how can we all work together to work with highly mobile students, and especially highly mobile ELL students? And that's why my colleagues are sitting next to me if you happen to have any questions. The one thing that we are really proud of in Bloomington for assessment is that you don't have to wait till spring to find out if a student is reading well or not. You can get an assessment right away in the fall using the MAP so that ELL students, highly mobile students who come in, can get an assessment so that we can get them at the right level of literature, et cetera, get them started, and that we can monitor progress frequently across time. And so, that's one thing we can do, but if you have any questions, I'm kind of preempting that you'll have a question for Eric. Maybe you won't.
Thank you. First of all, thank you so much for coming and being here for us, and then I'll open it up to any questions who would like to go first. Tom, go ahead.
Well, first of all, thanks for the thorough report. I always look forward to you coming here, and I'm always excited when I see you on the schedule because I'm a fan of data and all this. And my question is, I'm looking at slide number seven.
Yes.
And those kids that come in at seventh grade that are far below, and those that stay until twelfth grade, are we able to make any type of gain with those kids? Do you have any data for that at all?
Yes. We need to follow up on these mobile students to see if they were mobile, came into us, are they catching up? And so, that's kind of the next level of analysis is to see. I'm interested in putting together multiple cohorts of these continuously enrolled versus mobile to see how long do the mobile kids stay? Do they only stay half a year? Do they stay two years? You know, if they stay two years, do they make adequate progress to catch up? And that will help inform our Learning Supports Services to see, you know, if we aren't making good progress with mobile kids, what can we do? And go from there. That's exactly where I want to go next.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yeah, Rick.
Sorry, I didn't think about this earlier, but comparing ELL mobile students to non-ELL mobile students, have you done that analysis, too, just to see how much is just the mobility versus the language barriers?
Oh, good, good question, yes. There is an analysis that's called stepwise multiple regression. It's a technical term for putting in variables and seeing how much of the achievement is accounted for by these various variables. And the variable that comes in first is poverty. The second variable that comes in is English language learner, and the third variable that came in was mobility. They all are significant contributors. So, it's kind of hard to know, you know, the exact magnitude of the effect of mobility over and above it, but there is a significant effect. I do want to, you know, this is just one way of characterizing mobility. We conducted an extensive analysis of homeless students in Minneapolis and documented, had publications about how much of an impact homelessness has. So, we know that severe kind of mobility where children are sleeping in station wagons or with different relatives all the time, that that has a huge impact. We know that residential mobility changing two or three times during the year has a huge impact. But even just showing up after kindergarten has an impact. And so, all those forms of mobility are going to have, I think, a causal impact as well as correlational. Yeah, I hope to do further research to quantify that for you. We will continue to break things up by both of these variables.
Okay. I have a question, or?
I have a question.
No, go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you for this report. It's always very detailed. It's always long.
Hope it wasn't too long.
I'm not a big fan of numbers, but I always find it interesting. So, first of all, and I will be for Eric and Beth, what is the, also for you, what is the percentage of EL students that we have in the district?
It's twelve percent. Right now, it's twelve hundred and seventy kids.
Okay. And?
And a higher percentage in elementary, you know.
And a higher percentage.
Yeah.
Right, okay. So, for how long do we normally keep students in EL classes? For how many years?
Yeah, we have to have an average when we send out our state letter to notify parents, and our average is four years.
Four years, okay. Have you noticed any difference, you know, when you notice growth, have you noticed any difference between the students that stay in EL classes longer versus the ones that are not staying in EL classes anymore? Like, there are, I know there are parents that opt out of the EL service as well. Have you noticed any, you know, when you see that growth, could it be because they've got out of the EL class, or did they stay in the EL class?
So, you mean kids that we still identify in our MARS system, but their parents waived service?
Kids in general.
Or kids that we exit.
Just in general.
Okay, so, kids that we exit because they met our, like, exit criteria, they met our MCA scores and our English scores, they do better. We don't have a large number of waived kids. We have, I would say, about twenty district-wide, that's my guess. They tend not to do any better outside of an EL structured program. Part of the thing is, if I look at their data at the end of the year, and if they're close, if their MAP scores look good, if their MCA scores look good, we want to exit them, you know, because they've met our criteria.
Okay.
If they don't meet it, the state tells us we can't, we have to continually identify them, but we can't serve them because the parents have requested, which is their right, that we do not serve them.
Right.
And so, we're working really hard at the engagement piece with families that it does make a difference, it does improve their performance, and it's not maybe the best for them to waive service. I certainly understand why parents feel that way, but just looking at it from a numbers perspective, the kids tend to do better with the support.
So, there is nothing that really proves that at some point after they have had a certain amount of years in EL class, that they take that big leap once they're out? I'm curious to know, like, about that particular student, when you see that big, you know, how she jumped.
Yeah. I'm not sure if she was still in service at the time she jumped or not, but these are studies, good follow-up studies. I did a study similar in Minneapolis where we had more parents opting out, and we actually found the students who stayed in ELL did significantly better than the students who opted out, especially in the early ages. So, it was good for the ELL department to hear that that's one measure of effectiveness is that most of the students seem to benefit from the services.
And I think what happens, too, is kids, if we identify them in kindergarten, we exit a significant number after third grade because they're kind of in that range of three to four years, they need some support, they get it, we exit them because they meet our criteria. Happens again when we transition to sixth grade. So, our pool is getting smaller of kids who have more needs. We've kind of exited the kids who are kind of on, I would call, a normal trajectory of they need some support, they get it, we exit them. And it kind of happens at two points. So, I was at a data retreat for the state for middle school, and we noticed there was just a, you know, we kind of are maintaining a group of kids in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and the group kind of tends to struggle more. And then in ninth grade, we've exited some more kids, and the remaining kids that we have tend to be the kids who really have a lot of struggles. So, we're trying to figure out what's the best thing to do to support those kids that we sometimes call long-term ELs, like, they have not met our criteria to exit, so how can we support them? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Jim.
I guess, you know, this is also good so there's, so on one of these charts, we can track virtually every student. If I wanted to spend hours at night, insomnia.
Every child from first grade up through ninth grade has a chart like this. And so, I warn, I just have a caution that, you know, you can't predict very well from first grade scores whether a child's going to get into Carleton. But parents maybe want to start looking about fourth or fifth grade after three or four data points. They get a pretty good trend, and then in middle school, the parents seem to love it. They, you know, they're really resonating to it, and I think we had a really good turnout at the middle schools when they came out to see the paper. Now that they have it electronically, I think, you know, it's something that I hear a lot of positive comments about.
That's a good, good heading, beat the odds. I guess, Beth, for the, from five-year, we're funded for five years.
Right.
And of course, our goal then is to have them exit, like you said, you know, with four or whatever it is.
Yeah.
But is the, does the funding cease after five years so that those students who are still in it for seven? Do we have to pay that ourselves then?
Yes.
Hmm.
I'm sure our legislators are tuned in tonight. They know what channel to find us, so they're listening in.
I think we asked for more money. Said no.
You're right. That's an easy answer for them.
All right, I have one question that when I saw this, it kind of kept swirling around in my mind. I'm wondering, David, maybe if you're the one who loves the numbers the most about that, is there a way to find out at any one point in time, let's just say a month, how many students are mobile? If we just look at a month and not a week or a day, on average, how many are, would we consider them to be mobile students? I mean, that would be, at least when I'm looking at these numbers, it looks like a very significant challenge.
Yeah, there, depending on how we define mobility, I can take download from Ties any Ties any day of the week and find out on that day what percentage of the students were enrolled last year and which percentage of students are new this year. We have homeless information, uh, as well. I'm not sure exactly how often we update that, or, you know, uh, of that information.
One thing that we do at Valley View Middle School now is we keep, uh, Google Docs, and I get notifications every time it gets edited, which means somebody's coming or somebody's going. So, I mean, I can share it with Eric, it's not, and I can share it with Dave.
That's cool.
It's not maybe specific, but I, Valley View Middle School is, I would say, your microcosm of mobility, of kids coming in and out, moving from Richfield and back and, and forth, and, and really kinda paying attention to these kids. It might be that we think they're coming from Mexico, but really they've just spent a year in Mexico, and before that, they were at Richfield for three years, or they were born here. So, it is kind of an interesting pattern when we talk about some of these mobile kids. Some of them are mobile between countries. So, when you were asking about impacts before, English language can have a huge impact because families often send their kids back to Dominican, back to Mexico because of family issues, or because they had to relocate, and then they come back. So, they had some, you know, schooling here, and then they went back, and then they're back, and so we have to figure out where they're at, because now there's bigger gaps, and we're trying to figure out how to fill in those gaps.
Okay, well, the, the reason I asked, and thank you, by the way, Beth, the reason I asked is that if we, if you had a sort of a moving average, you might be able to, to, when you're, when you're planning over the summer, you might be able to get ready for this percentage of students on average, um, are, are mobile, you know, and, and I don't know if that's a number that's, that's helpful or not, but it's one that just kinda jumped out at me, and, and I don't know how to manipulate the numbers the same way and then look for good data.
That's, that's a great idea. And, uh, in Minneapolis, we had a lot of families come in, in the middle of the year. Uh, in Bloomington, most of the transition takes place during the summer, but we do have students who come in in the middle of the year as well. And so, these are things that, um, I'll, I'll, I'll work on tracking and ways of reporting it so that, uh, it, um, it's understandable. But I just love the fact that Valley View has this system working for their school. That's where the rubber hits the road, is knowing that a new child has come into your school, get them assessed, get them into the right classes, get the extra, uh, learning supports that they need, and, uh, you know, that, that's where we're gonna see the impacts of our learning supports.
Great, yeah, Jim?
Just a basic question, when you do all this research and everything else, is that on your own system, our district system, or is it a software program that's available, and then we tweak it and do things?
So, all the data is on the, uh, Bloomington system. My predecessor, Jim Angamar, did a great job of, uh, having historical data in a, in a way that I can download it at my desktop. I, I use a program called Statistical Package for the Social Sciences, SPSS. Uh, you could use Excel, you could use other kinds of tools, but, um, the amazing thing is we have these really clean databases that I can go out and grab it. Now, if you give me a, an assignment, I'll go out and start working on it tomorrow, and I'll get you the results pretty fast, because we have such a good data system.
And then you had mentioned earlier in one of them, teachers who beat the odds? I don't know if I misheard you, or students who beat the odds?
Yeah, we, we do have, um, we had a presentation last year on a teacher who had the highest growth overall over a three-year period in second grade. She was at Valley View Elementary. This year, I'm doing a study of middle school math, and a teacher, um, kinda rose to the top, is having the highest overall, uh, achievement for her students. Once you control for poverty, English language learner, special ed status, so it's, it's, it's a real causal impact. And so, she's just been videotaped, so I'm hoping to get that videotape edited into you by next fall, uh, 'cause I think, uh, more and more, we're, we're finding, we have fabulous teachers, we need to celebrate the great work they're doing, and especially these teachers that are, uh, kinda beating the odds with English language learners, students of color, students in poverty, who typically haven't made as great progress. Uh, then we wanna replicate those kinds of, uh, situations, and, and, uh, so, we'll have another one coming pretty soon. Uh, but I did talk about it at the, the Senate, and they're interested in finding funding for this analysis. It's called value-added analysis, and it's highly sophisticated computer programming, and it, it has an expense attached to it. We've been lucky, we've been, uh, had funding from the Bush Foundation for the last five years to do this analysis, but now we kind of have a gap. So, the legislature said they're gonna do what they can, we're talking to foundations, we're, we're talking to our colleagues to see, you know, maybe we could have a consortium of districts in the state that could get this going, but kinda, right now, Bloomington's kinda the spearhead of it.
Can I just mention, as you mentioned, the seventh grade math teacher for the past two years at Valley View, we've been co-teaching in seventh grade math. So, that means an English language teacher goes in to that class, we, we group kids, we have a fifty-fifty class, and they work on language and math at the same time, and the results have been phenomenal. So, I'm just plugging for the company.
Great.
All right, great.
Another question, going back to numbers. Um, so you said that the biggest number is in the elementary school, right?
Right.
EL. Um, so, about what percentage do you still see being an EL student towards the end of middle school or even high school? Do we even have high schoolers? Yeah, we do.
We do.
We have a hundred and eighteen students. Remember, kids come in continuously, so at middle school, we also have new, kids new to country. I teach a class where they're all new to country. So, I mean, you mix those kids in, so obviously, they're gonna need the time, and there's that pathway at Kennedy too. Um, at Kennedy, it's probably half and half.
Mm-hmm.
Of, of those kids, half are new to country, or they've come since middle school, and half have been since elementary school. Um, and at the middle school, most of the kids have been there since elementary school.
So, what are the chances of those students making it into college if, um, you know, many of those students will probably end up taking less rigorous classes, and considering that, you know, the number of credits that you earn during the high school years are, are a big deal for when you apply for college? I'm just kinda worried about ones that don't make it.
You know, definitely, and after middle school, we do end up exiting a number of kids, and since Andy Beaton, and that award was well deserved, he, when he came, we talked about how do we increase the rigor for our English language learners. So, we got rid of basic math, and everybody goes into a COTAT algebra class, and we know there are gaps with some kids, so they get the math support. And now we have a COTAT physical science class and a COTAT biology class, because they need the rigor. If, if we want them to make a pathway into a two-year, four-year college, you're right, we can't put them in classes that don't have that. So, we're working really hard, and I would say, it's one of those things where it's not just EL, it's also, how are we dealing with family engagement? Um, how are we dealing with other classes, so that the kids are getting the study skills and the academic skills they need to be successful?
So, we are encouraging kids to go hard, to go for it.
Absolutely. I, yeah, I wouldn't do it if I weren't encouraging them to go hard, 'cause they're great kids, and they're smart kids.
And I just put it, put it down as my to-do, uh, to start with, a group that's in English language learner courses in middle school, follow them up until they take the ACT and C, what our baseline is right now in terms of how many of those students are ready for two-year or four-year college, and then, uh, we'll bring that back to you.
That's good, yeah, thank you.
All right, great, thanks. Beth, Eric, David, thank you for coming, appreciate it.
Did Eric say anything? Did he say anything?
Glad I could help.
Moral support.
Just be in there, it's good. All right, um, next up, um, Rick, we have Rick Hoffman, uh, who's gonna help us walk through some school board public engagement discussion.
And with your permission, Mr. Bergstrom, we would like to switch the agenda with our guests in the audience, to give them a chance to leave after.
Yes, perfect plan. So, Rick and Suzanne are going to help us, uh, go through the family engagement plan update.
Correct.
There we go.
So, Chairman Bergstrom, Superintendent Fujaki, members of the Board of Education, we do thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight a family engagement update. Um, with me tonight is Suzanne Powulu. I always have a hard time saying that, but it's, working with her now for the, for the past year, very closely been able to do that. But I'd also like to introduce to you, uh, or have Suzanne introduce to you, our family and community engagement coordinators, who are with us tonight, 'cause a lot of the credit for what we're gonna share with you in this update goes to Suzanne and our team of coordinators as well. We'll have them stand up for you as, you know, its names.
Okay, of course, you've all heard a lot about, uh, Ms. Radius' guest this evening. She's our family and community engagement coordinator at Kennedy High School. And we have Rosalba Martinez, who currently is our family and community engagement coordinator at Washburn Elementary, and will be transitioning to Valley View Middle. Could you stand up? Okay. Now, we have, uh, Nicole Flowers is, um, family and community engagement coordinator at Indian Mounds. Rosio Horwath is, uh, our family and community engagement coordinator at Valley View Elementary. And our newest member of the team is Noe Lara. He has just joined us last week, and he is our new family and community engagement coordinator at, uh, Washburn Elementary, and will be working there with Rosalba for a while as she transitions on. Josephi Moreno is, um, not with us this evening, she's the coordinator at Oak Grove Elementary. She's, um, traveling today due to a death in her family, but she would for sure be with us, um, if that hadn't happened, so.
Great.
Thank you.
So, um...
We should, um, we have a PTA member, I forgot. So, she came to support family engagement as well, and Rosalba, can you introduce, Carleen? Carleen?
Carleen, our PTA member at Washburn.
Great, thank you.
All right, Carleen, thank you for coming. Thank, thank you to all of you for coming. And there's room up front if you wanna come closer.
So, I will, um, take a few minutes to kick off for tonight, and then, uh, share the, the stage, if you will, with Suzanne. Um, but the purpose of all the presentation tonight is to provide you an update on the family engagement plan that first was presented to the board a little over a year ago, um, that the board, uh, we gave the, we gave an outline of our goals, our efforts, current efforts from the, uh, through, across the district. Tonight, our current efforts will be really focused on the family engagement plan. As you heard with the previous speakers, and you hear a common thread throughout many of the presenters that have come before the board over the last year, is the work of family engagement. It is not just solely part of family, the, the family engagement office under Community Relations, but, uh, a role and responsibility that a lot of folks in the district are doing. Um, the status of our plans programmed, now a year, uh, in operation. Uh, we're gonna, to share with you the, an assessment tool to help measure our work, um, and our plan that we've moved forward, and then talk about our next steps, including the Family Welcome Center, um, that we'll get into more detail. I do wanna make note that the presentation tonight draws from, uh, an executive summary, a family engagement plan, an executive summary of our current goals and achievement that was presented to the board, or shared electronically to the board, uh, earlier this year, so, so a couple months ago. Um, so if you're seeing the slides and you read that report, you'll see there's a lot of, um, duplication. Our commitment that we shared with you a year ago and remains today is in collaboration with our parents and community, um, to establish a program or practice, practices, that enhance family engagement to reflect the specific needs of students and their families.
And I'll just take a minute to review our goals with you. Our family engagement plan endeavors to provide parents with a better understanding of the public education system, and specifically for Bloomington Public Schools. Uh, we want to build, um, partnership and relationships between community, school, and parents, and staff, to increase the level of family involvement in their child's education, as well as parents' participa- participation in school decisions. We offer parents creative ways to, um, support their children's learning at home, prepare students to graduate high school, ready for college, and on our pathways to graduation, and to prepare our teachers for participation from diverse communities, and create a welcoming environment at all of our schools. Currently, uh, and you've met, um, a lot of, all of our coordinators who implement these wonderful programs at their schools, but currently, we have, um, school-based programs and district-level programs, and I'll just list them here, and then I'll go into detail about each of them. There's a Family Academy, and that's our elementary model, Family Focus for, um, at Valley View Middle, Parent Engagement Forums at Kennedy High School, and our Family Stars University, which is at the district level, and of course, the Family Community Engagement Family Academy, uh, basically, um, is monthly workshops that provide parents with tools and strategies to support learning at home. We help parents better understand their child's school and expectations, uh, encourage healthy communication between parents and teachers in the school, and we work towards, um, increasing parent participation in volunteering at school, and specifically in decision-making and involvement in, um, the PTA.
Family Academy is in third year at Washburn, and the first full year at our other Title One schools, Valley View Elementary, Oak Grove Elementary, Indian Mounds, and, I think that's all. Say one.
I think so. Okay. Okay, um, so, Family Focus at the middle level, um, modeled after Family Academy at the elementary, but in, but focuses, again, monthly workshops, but focuses on providing information to parents that are specific around the unique needs of middle schoolers and what parents need to know. And of course, we had a lot of interaction around rolling out the Chromebooks this year, as well as the social, emotional, and health needs of middle schoolers. Um, our parent engagement forums at the high school level, those happen quarterly, and they're larger, more global presentations that provide opportunities for parents, students, staff, and the community to, um, apply collective vision for the benefit of the school community. Forums address partnerships, steps towards, um, achievement for students, and approaches to closing the achievement gap.
Each of our coordinators work directly with, not only with Suzanne, but principals at the, each of the schools, to develop and craft not only the Family Academy, but the Family Focus and Parent Engagement Forums. While the Family Academy is very similar, there are unique nuances with each school, each of their parents, and so, um, the specific Family Academy, the focus, and the forums is specific to the, each of the schools. And so, we don't take a cookie cutter approach, even though we take, uh, what, what we consider best practices, and replicate them in and throughout these programs.
And then, our Family Stars University, which is the district-wide program, we've just completed this year two cohorts. Um, uh, we had a fall session, a winter session, and both sessions were eight weeks long. The families go through an eight-week curriculum. We've had a total of sixty-five graduates, um, and we just work to provide, um, families more information and a better understanding of our Bloomington system. Um, I wanted to just say that some of the information that Dr. Heistad shared tonight, and, um, Beth, are, we take some of that information, um, and provide it to the families in Family Stars University. We poll from the, um, experts in our district and have them come in and meet with families, so that the families can see and understand the data, and also learn the impact of maybe the mobility or other situations, how that has on the achievement of their student. Um, we've had parents who were like, really crazy and excited for the app on the phone, and really enthusiastic about getting the information about their students on the pathways. Um, we offer creative ways for parents and guardians to support learning at home, um, again, tools and strategies, um, for success at home, and how they can support their child on the pathway to college and career-ready.
Family Stars University is the Family Engagement Plan's district signature program that was developed after a series, as you know, a series of focus groups and conversations with parents and families, uh, or students of color, as well as other parents throughout the district. What we heard over and over from a lot of those focus groups, from most of the focus groups, was a program that would, uh, focus on helping parents navigate the public, uh, public school system, specifically Bloomington Public Schools, um, the role of the school board, the role of principals, uh, discipline, um, grades, so on and so forth. Um, so we were very happy to launch this last fall. One of the things we learned is we had a huge interest that grew out of a significant marketing effort last summer, including a number of our family engagement coordinators in the office, who made lots of telephone calls to, uh, families, inviting them to, uh, be, to sign up for Family Stars University. What we did find out is that, um, our first cohort and the second cohort, it doubled in the, in the interest in those that actually signed up, and then those that attended. And we did a little research with other school pro- programs similar to ours, and found that fifty percent, uh, graduates for each of the programs is pretty, um, standard, pretty normal. So, with that, though, we've learned a lot, and, and, um, you know, this wasn't a very good winter for getting people to come out of the house and attend, uh, once a week for eight weeks, and so... And so one of the things that we shared with you a year ago as we evaluate all of our programs is to improve on them or make changes that will lead to, in this case, more interest and focus. And so we, we might touch on this in next steps, but we will be going to one Family Stars University this, for the 2014-15 school year. And it'll be earlier in the fall, take advantage of a number of things that we heard from evaluations that we got from participants in both the universities. And I'll thank you to Superintendent Fujitaki and Chair Bergstrom for being at the graduations and handing out diplomas, and we really appreciate that.
And then our family and community engagement coordinators who you've met. And of course, as Rick said, each coordinator works closely with their administrator and with their specialists at the school and in getting feedback from parents at the school to really build a dynamic program at each school. One aspect is the Family Academy or Family Focus or Family Forums. However, we work each year to build a deeper level of engagement and depending on the school community, that may look different. We look to a lot of the work that's been going on at Washburn, because it's in its third, fourth year, to see how that engagement has grown over the years from starting from the monthly workshops and now seeing increased participation on PTA, increased volunteer, volunteers coming into the schools and just a really robust school community. So currently this year, as we shift our focus from what schools should do to involve parents and how we can partner more with our parents and our community, we looked to a framework that was established and researched based by the National PTA Standards for Family School Partnerships. So we have aligned our work with six standards. Welcoming all families into the school community, communicating effectively, supporting student success, speaking up for every child, sharing power, and collaborating with the community. And so we have just undergone a great effort to survey parents at the six schools that we have coordinators and get their feedback on how we're doing in those six areas. And so soon we'll be summarizing the, the data and that will inform our work plan as we move forward into next year.
This is one assessment tool. We're also working with Dr. Heistad in, as he looks at students along their pathways tied to work not only family engagement, but also the work of cultural liaisons with Office of Educational Equity as well.
So as I said, next steps, coordinators will be developing their plans utilizing the national standards for family school partnerships. We will be, continue to explore program options for schools not currently served by family engagement coordinators. Of course, funding remains a challenge. We're developing strategies for more collaborative work with early childhood, birth to five, and with the Office of Educational Equity. And we are in collaboration with Community Services and the Office of Educational Equity preparing and planning for a family welcome and resource center. And we have incorporated family engagement elements into the new integration plan. So a little bit of more information about the Family Welcome and Resource Center. At the same time that we've been planning this center, we have, the district has also decided to move towards an online registration system. So we will be managing the process and completion of enrollments through the, the Welcome and Resource Center. We also hope to provide assistance for families. Really, this is for new families entering the district. And now with the online system, that can happen wherever the families are, where they have the technology. It will just be managed and monitored by the person at the Welcome Center. However, families or people needing assistance because of language or not having technology or just navigating the system will find those resources at the Welcome Center. And we are collaborating with early childhood screening, kindergarten assessments, the clinic at Pond, special education and ELL assessments.
Tremendous kudos to Suzanne, who's been managing the planning and implementation of the Resource Center. There have been a number of people that have come to us after we talked about this, presented to Cabinet and other principals most recently, that the, where this idea has actually been germinating for a number of years, if not more than five years. The fact that it's coming to fruition is making lots of people happy, but it's a tremendous amount of work. And so I give a lot of credit to Suzanne for meeting with lots of different folks. What we are doing is we're kind of approaching this with two pha-, a two-phase rollout. First phase, as Suzanne talked about, is the online enrollment. We will manage the elementary and middle school enrollments, the online piece, and the high schools will continue to manage the online enrollments. It allows us to roll this out, do a little troubleshooting while the high school staff feels more comfortable in working with families in that enrollment process. As I said, we've met with principals, guidance counselors, secretaries, ongoing, but that's really phase one. That's our efforts for this summer. By fall, we hope to begin to roll out those other pieces and we, and Mr. Melby is here and we've met with his staff about the English learner and special education assessments and working there as well as the early childhood and the Pond Center Clinic. So it's not going to all happen at once. It's going to be rolled out in phases, but the online enrollment is the most important. So final thoughts before we turn over to you to ask questions of this particular presentation. You know, the best predictor of family involvement is what school does to promote involvement. The family engagement plan will help not only the district office, but educators to become more effective in promoting family engagement. It is, does seem to be a buzzword over the last year, year and a half, but family engagement has been around for a very long time. It is one of my, was one of my primary responsibilities when I worked in Colorado. Family engagement encompasses a wide range of activities in school, home, and the community includes anything that better prepares students to learn and families and schools support of that learning. Most importantly, strategies that foster high level of participation. There is no silver bullet, there's no one specific strategy to say that family engagement is a success. We last week spent two half-days working with our colleagues in the Office of Educational Equity to develop a better collaborative working on a number of these strategies as well as the Welcome Center. And we are committed to moving forward and continuing to do that work because as I think one of our, one of the individuals participating said, there's enough work to go around for everyone. So with that, we will be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Great. Anyone, any questions? Yeah, Tom.
Yeah, I know it's mid-year and.
Prettier. He's closer.
Anyway. So I know it's mid-year and your data isn't complete, but do you have any attendance numbers on how well these programs are being attended? You know, the, the Family Academy and the Family Focus. I mean, are we seeing a large audience in the fall and then it's kind of decreasing as the year goes on? Or are we building an audience or?
I would say both. I think that the winter was rough. We had a number of cancellations and then when we were holding them during those rough months, attendance was lower. So I think in the fall and spring, we see higher numbers. And we, I can tell you with the Family Stars University, the, the fall participation rates were about 50 each week and we had more around 20, 25 each week during the winter. I know that attendance at the school-based programs hovers around 20, but we've had upwards of 50, 75. And one thing that was key to me when I ran into, at Valley View Middle conferences when we were surveying families, I saw one of the Family Stars University participants who attended several sessions, but I didn't see her at the end and you guys didn't get to hand her her certificate. And I said, well, we've missed you, where have you been? And she said, you know what? I got exactly what I needed. So I think sometimes, what that said to me was that sometimes parents see the offerings and the topics and they know what they need and that there's a lot of demands on their time. They're also engaging in the things that we absolutely want them to engage in, conferences, their kids' sporting events, and things like that. So if we're offering different things for different people, like the all-some-few model, I believe that we're meeting the needs of a lot of families in different ways.
Okay. So if you're thinking about 20 is with the Family Academy, would you say that's about the number that you predicted, a little higher, lower?
Well, you know, going off of, we built this at the elementary level and even at the middle school off of Washburn's, the first two years of Washburn. And we were consistently getting around 35 to 45 parents those first couple of years there. So I think it's building differently at each, at each school. At Valley View Elementary last year, I know we've seen as high as, you know, 35 to 40 as well.
One of the things, Mr. Bennett, to, it's sort of anecdotal, but at Washburn, we have seen an increase in parents volunteering, parents attending PTA or other functions that we may not have seen two years ago. That's part of the comfort level and the feeling that you are more welcome or that our schools are doing a better job of, of helping parents understand the roles of being a parent and being involved in the child's education.
Jim?
To follow up with the PTA slash family engagement plan, I know in some schools, PTAs are still down, you know, while there might be a lot in the family engagement participation in the various other programs, but has, is that effort, is there an effort, a collaboration effort, or are they still really two separate functions and opportunities?
I, I would say we've begun to collaborate more closely, but they are two separate functions. But one of our biggest functions is to, at the higher levels of engagement, to bring families into shared decision-making. And one of the ways to get families to do that is to participate in PTA. So more and more at the school level, our family engagement coordinators are working with their PTA in their building. And we have seen some joint programming. Washburn is a great example. This year, the PTA and Rosalba and her, some leadership group that she formed and Family Academy parents all came together and created a program for the school. And they also have increased participation from the Latino community. I don't know if either of you want to talk about that. Carly, do you want to say something about it?
Sure, I can. I'm Carleen Kertola.
Do you want, you have to. She can say, she can answer that better. I know of the collaboration, but the hands-on work that they've done together, there's been a couple of workshops, shared learning, and then the program has really grown.
Yeah, and Rosalba should really chime in as well. But I'm Carleen Kertola, I'm treasurer of the PTA and have been, and very involved over the last three years with the organization at Washburn. So it's a great pleasure to be here and to support certainly what the family engagement group has done at Washburn over the last few years. So I will say, part of our mission as a PTA that we've talked about strategically over the last couple of years is how do we really embrace the multicultural nature of Washburn? Fairly new to us, had probably within the last 10 years that we've really become a more multicultural school. And we just really feel like it's important to embrace that as much as possible. The PTA has been very representative, not very representative, I would say recently, of the broad range and the kinds of students and the kinds of families that we have. So this year in particular, we reached out to Rosalba and we said, what can we do to help bridge some of the things that are happening in terms of getting more volunteering from the schools that we don't, or the families that we don't typically see at our meetings or don't typically engage with us? And so one thing that we came up with was with a joint meeting to talk about both that with Family Academy as well as the PTA, talk about what are the kinds of things that we could do together to increase engagement. That was really successful. We came up with a couple of things. One, which we implemented immediately, which was to have a joint Spanish class, an after-school enrichment class, where we bring together both kids who speak Spanish at home and kids who are brand-new to it. And so we're doing a half-hour together where they talk about something cultural and then they're doing a half-hour of language learning separately. And we have 25 kids enrolled and everybody on the PTA is really excited about that offering as a way to bring families together and as a way to bring those kids together who may be in class together every day, but don't necessarily socialize together. So that's just an example of one of the initiatives that we've come up with. We're also looking at doing a multicultural event, like you see in a fair number of schools as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. And that kind of reinforces, you know, we do so many good things. A lot of the schools are innovative and unique, each one, especially at the elementary level. And what we've seen is, you know, through the PTSA Council and just through general discussion, so many of them that are good are being replicated at other schools or tried at other schools, you know, in order to do the best that they can with the other schools too. So that's what's been very successful and I appreciate your sharing that with us.
I just wanted to answer, I'm sorry, one more. I have Rosalba talk because I think another thing is the increased, you know, attendance at, at a workshop or an event is a snapshot of what family engagement is. And so, Rosalba, if you could add just about how we've had to change a little bit of the structure to engage more families and how you two have worked together to do that.
Well, in the beginning, we form groups. And last year, when Mr. Millerhagen was the principal, we talked about targeting groups like Somali groups and Latino groups and Asian. But it was hard to do the same, everything at the same time. So I said, well, for this year, I can do the Latino and try to engage the Latino community. And then after that, then we'll work towards the Somali and Asian community. With the Latino group, it's basically learning. They are very interested in learning. And every time we met, besides Family Academy, because Family Academy is one of the things that happened at Washburn, but we also have a Latino group that is in Washburn. It's not my group, it's just Washburn group. And those parents are there just to learn. And when they learn that it's very, very important to be involved and engaged in their child's education and be in the school because that is basically, that they know that they are the role models of those children. We start forming committees and parents start like taking leadership on what they want to do, like they are in charge. We have three, three groups in the Latino group that are like, for example, one is the volunteer committee, the other is the carnival or the person who is in charge of the talent show. So those are three things that are working in, within that community to support also. We have a PTA member that is Latino and both the group supports him and he's the voice in PTA. So that's a way how we've been working with PTA and with the Latino community as right now. But it doesn't mean that it's the work in Washburn with the Latino community or other groups is done. We want to engage also the African-American, like I said, Somali and Asian because that's part of the plan.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dawn.
I just want to thank you. I just think this is so important that we're reaching out to families. When I saw the 2013 Minnesota Student Survey, one thing that very much concerned me, I found it actually kind of heartbreaking, was our ninth, so this has been ninth-grade students last year reported when they were asked if others care about them. And they said, you have parents that care about you? Only 65% of our students said that they had parents that cared about them on that survey. And then in additional, only 52% said they had another adult family member that cared about them. So that's 35 and 48% of our students that say they do not have any one family member that cares about them. And I found that just heartbreaking. And I thought, wow, I hope that this will change those numbers when they see that their families are involved in the school and when they take this in the future, that hopefully we can change that so that we, so that that significantly changes. And I would love to see how much those parents were involved. You know, the kids that reported that, it would have been really nice if we could figure out some way to see, did they have parents that were ever involved or not?
And I think it speaks to, although it's somewhat related, but I think it speaks to the fact that family engagement is for all families. I think sometimes when we talk about family engagement, it's just for our families of color. It's not, in fact, our Family Stars University, once we did the initial meeting, if you were kicked off, then we had various sub-cohorts. So we had Spanish-speaking, Somali-speaking leaders, we had English-speaking, and we had a mixture of not only African-American, but Chinese, Vietnamese, and several parents of white students that attended Family Stars University. So I think it, it speaks to the importance that every child, or at least certainly more percentage of students, say that they have an adult that they can turn to or rely on.
And then I just have another question. I just wanted to say that when you have the results from the surveys, I'm hoping that you'll share that with us, as we'd like to see the results of the surveys that you get back.
Individuals, yeah, the, yep.
I mean, even email to assume, have to make a report or, you know?
Sure, sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Noe.
Yes, thank you. Well, thanks for the report. Something I was looking forward to for you here. This is a very interesting topic. And thank you to Rosalba Martinez for being here tonight. It's nice to see you here, sitting right there at that table. I know that she has done an amazing job over the last three or four years. Yeah. So one question I have, and as we know, we are aware that we are here to serve all of our families, right? You know, we're serving different nationalities, ethnicities. So when it comes to that, if we try to divide. to that, if we try to divide different groups, communities, how many do we have, how many families are we seeing from each one of those groups? Have you, do you know, do you have a number of, percentage of the families that have been attending, especially Families, Family Stars?
The highest percentage, we don't have the direct numbers in front of me unless you do Suzanne, but the highest percentage of families are Spanish-speaking, followed by Somali, and then, as I said, a combination, a mixture of others. I think the Family Stars University, what we saw from some of the evaluations is because the, the content or the information that was provided, it drew a greater interest from families that are not either cultural or know the system, as opposed to longer-established families here in Bloomington, that understand the system, find it easier to navigate, easier to contact their principal or teacher, as opposed to new immigrants or families, as Rosalba said, in some cultures that education is so revered that the expectation is when their child goes to school, they are receiving a top-notch education, and it's not necessarily the parent's responsibility or role necessarily to replace that of the teacher. That's part of the conversation, part of the work that not only Rosalba, but all of our family engagement coordinators and Family Stars University has been focusing on and helping to break down those barriers. It also requires, as part of our plan, to do that internally too, among all staff, to build a better understanding of reaching out to all parents, to help them feel welcome and make it easier to navigate the system.
Okay, so from those 60, I think you said 65, right? If I go back to the slide. Yeah, 65 families that have attended the Stars program. Then are you able to share that information with us? I thought about that today, so I apologize for not trying to ask this earlier. I was pretty busy. But it would be nice if we could have that kind of information. When it comes to numbers, it would be good to see how, you know, what it looks like right now compared to what it's going to look like in a year or two years.
Sure, we'd be happy to share with you. And that's why I said, I think we were a little, I was personally very surprised that we had somewhere around 140, 150 people that had signed up for the first cohort, parents and/or guardians that had signed up. But at the end of the day, it was only about half that that actually completed the entire course. We had some parents and guardians that attended three or four sessions but didn't graduate. So we'll be happy to share the numbers, but I caution that the evaluation of those programs isn't based totally on the number of attendance, although that's one of the reasons why, quite frankly, we're reducing instead of two sessions to one, in the one for the next school year, to take advantage of the opportunity that we're starting to reach more people, but maybe the weather is more cooperative and folks just aren't as busy.
Yeah, and I totally understand, because I work with family engagement too, and it really is very, very difficult to get the parents to come. One thing, and then the weather, like you said before, it just doesn't help at all. But it would be definitely very nice to know, you know, how many Latinos do we have, how many African-Americans came today, how many, you know, Asian parents came. It would be nice if we could have it divided in groups. Other thing I wanted to ask is, okay, so once the parents are done with those eight weeks, or, you know, in all different programs, once the parents have been coming and completed the program, then what's next? What's the next step? What happens to those parents that were already present and got their certificate and then went home?
Well, one of the things we do in the program is provide parents with the opportunities that are at their school, at the school-based level, so Families, Family Academy, or Family Focus, or Parent Engagement Forums. We also want to promote the OEE parent groups, PTA, so all of the ways that families can now go and engage. We have a principal panel come in one of the weeks to talk specifically about elementary, middle, and high school opportunities for engagement. So they're leaving equipped with knowledge about how to go then back to the school and what all opportunities are awaiting there for them to engage at the school level.
Admittedly, those schools with family engagement coordinators, which they're targeting their efforts on those parents and guardians of that school, have a greater effect of parent involvement. A number of schools that don't have family engagement coordinators, they may work with their cultural liaison, or in some cases, those schools have used their compensatory dollars to buy time for a paraprofessional or a cultural liaison type of individual, not only to work with their students, but their families. And the hope is that, because as you saw on our slide, with funding is a, remains a challenge, that we can, that's that importance of that collaboration between OEE and family engagement, so that, because we can't get in every school, unfortunately.
Yes, I understand. Okay, so now that you talk about money, you know, when we start up a program like this, this really is a big plan. We're talking about, you know, center, community center. It is a big program. What we're doing is, it's a big program, and what I've seen is, it's a program that keeps growing and growing and growing. I remember last year, we were not provided with a specific budget of what this plan was going to cost or what it was going to look like. So do we have a budget now? Is there, is there like a specific list of numbers that we can see now? It's been a year, so I would anticipate that that's, that will be coming.
The, I'm looking at Mr. Melby, but the budget is integration dollars that funds family engagement, along with community relations, general fund dollars that, I don't have the breakdown for you, we can certainly get that for you. But it, I mean, it's been a combination of funds that have done it.
Yeah, I understand that. And because, you know, normally when we have a program here, and we're talking about programs, and we're talking about taxpayers' money, it's, you know, we always want to see what's happening with the numbers, so that would be very helpful. Because we'll probably have people asking too, and, you know, we're accountable for that kind of information as well. And, you know, same as we kind of relating this to money, you know, how, how are we, with all the programs that we do in the district, somehow they all go attached to student success. So how are we, how do we see here student success? Where do we see it coming from, or where, what are the ways that we are looking for that kind of information that comes from the family engagement plan that we, we are seeing in the district?
Like with many, I'll take a stab, and then I'll let Suzanne address it. Like many of the programs in the district, we all believe that they lend themselves to student achievement. While some would, would want to target only the test scores to identify what their student is achieving, Pathways to Graduation is more about test scores, but the involvement of parents, other programs. So we believe that based on the standards of assessment that we identified, the National PTA Standards for Families and School Partnerships, that that will help us to identify the program in general. As I noted earlier, Dr. Heistad working with him, because what we expect to see, though we would never take full credit, is to see student achievement increase among all of our students, particularly students that may struggle more with the educational system. So as we continue to see improvements at Washburn, where the program is in its third year, we hope, as I said, to replicate that at those other elementary schools and then across the district. But I would, I would, I would not say that that's going to totally be because of family engagement, because there's lots of programs that can certainly take credit for that work.
Right. And, but are we, do we have a plan to follow up on those families that have already participated, more specifically on those students that are part of the plan already or that have been part of the program, so that we can actually see, you know, how successful the program is going to be between one session and the next?
Oh, I was just saying, we take attendance, and we align the parents with the students, and we'll provide Dr. Heistad and the assessment people at the schools with the children who are participating, so that we can track their academic achievement over the years, year or years. We have some anecdotal data from the past, mostly from Washburn, because every other school at Valley View is in year two, and the rest of the schools are in year one. But we've had teachers share results in terms of increased homework completion, you know, better participation in class. Whether that translates to standardized testing, I don't know at this point, but we definitely have in the classroom types of outcomes that we've seen. Did you have something, Rosalba, specific?
Yes. One of the things that a teacher shared with me, it was that since she's been working for 15 years in Bloomington, she never had someone ask him, or like the classroom actually, knowing what type of questions ask about, like, how is the kid doing in her class, and how to help the child at home. So she said, this is the first time, first year I hear, like, most of my parents are involved, like, engaged on that question and being proactive. One of the other things that we work a lot is in communication with teachers and parents, so that's something that in Washburn has been really good, though. But back to the question that you said, after, like, parents finishing Family Academy, the goal is to have parents have access to PTA and advocate for services, and, because like Carleen was saying, PTA is not well-represented for, of diversity. So what we want is people from diversity coming to PTA and advocate for services that they need, and be equally in the services that we provide for children and families.
But it definitely would be nice if, you know, for the future, if you have a more specific assessment on the program and how it is related to student achievement, because it would be nice to see, you know, what made a difference, what seemed to have significant impact directly on the student.
One of the tools that we're using, the standards that were, there's a rubric that goes along with it, and it's research-based, and I kind of compare it to, in youth work, the youth program quality assessment tool, where the research and literature says that if you're providing this level of quality program for youth, it produces good outcomes for children. I feel that's with these standards, if we're meeting these standards and we're moving along the rubric tool from, you know, beginner to excelling to meeting, that if we're providing these good quality areas and opportunities for parents, they will produce positive outcomes for children.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Rick, yes.
I wanted to bring this up before I forget. If we do start looking at, you know, trying to find if it's increasing test scores or not, two of the things that I had thought of was, we could see if it affects mobility rate, because I have a feeling that the parents or families that are really engaged in a particular school are going to find it just a little bit harder to leave. Now, if your job gets moved to Taiwan, you know, there's really not much you're going to be able to do about it. But if it's a difference of moving from here to Richfield or Burnsville or Eagan, you might, you might even move to Richfield and try to keep your kids here. So maybe that would be one idea that we'd think of, and also long-term graduation rates. And so it might not show up in test scores, but it might, you might see at the locations where we have this, like, you know, our mobility rate used to be, throw out a number, 8%, and now it's only 6 or 4, and maybe this has something to do with that. I mean, I even know, at our school, I mean, I, when, when the board shifted the boundaries, we decided to stay at our school, even though it was going to be harder for us to stay than just put our kid on the bus at the end of our driveway and send him. So I have a feeling that it could, because we were already vested heavily in our school. So I have a feeling that this could have some more effects that will be a little bit harder to put a score on, but it might be more, I don't know, organic for us.
If I can make a clarification too, because we get this question a lot. Family engagement focuses on parents and guardians and families first and foremost. As I think you've heard Rosalba and Carleen and Suzanne, and our family engagement coordinator will tell you, that if we are successful in engaging our parents and the guardians, become more involved in their child's education, become more involved in helping their child at home with homework or turning the TV off or the Game Boy off or Nintendo, whatever is the latest craze now, and reading and doing those kinds of things, that that will have an impact. There are lots of other programs specifically to working with our students directly, more directly, that will have a greater impact on student achievement. This is one, it's often been described to me as one piece of a big pie of what it takes to help educate a child. So appreciate the comments and the questions, but I want to be real, us to be clear, that our efforts are going to be more secondary and tertiary, as opposed to more directly that our outstanding staff is doing at the school individual level.
All right, I'll go. Jim, you had your hand up first.
That's a rude, it's my, no, it's my second time.
The Welcome Center and Resource Center, is that going to be one location, somewhere in staff, you know, like 12 hours a day?
It is, and it's interesting, but there's a parallel effort underway, Jack and Swords, working with lots of folks in the early childhood area. Pond, the Pond Early Childhood Family Center, as it's known now, really houses lots of different programs. And so they are developing a marketing program that we believe that the name, and I won't, I won't give out the name because it's still being talked about in committees, but that will be a centerpiece where there'll be a number of programs. So you'll have early childhood programs, you have volunteer connections, you have paws there. That's also where we would like to house the Welcome Center, the family engagement activities included that is the Welcome Center. Eric Melby and Superintendent Fujitaki opened some doors, and Eric Melby is following up. One of the things we know at the Welcome Center that we believe would increase traffic is that if it's a bus stop, that that's where the bus stops. Right now, I think the, there's a pickup drop-off at Third and 98th, and then there's another one, I believe, on Nicolet and 94th. We are, Eric's been in conversation with Metro Transit to actually have that become a bus pickup drop-off. So that we believe would, would have helped. So to answer your question, Mr. Sorum, the idea is that it would be the primary location that we would direct families to for enrollment, for resources, for assisting, as, as we pointed out, all those kinds of things, because that, that facility houses a lot of the things that we have.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Dawn?
I don't want to get in ahead of anybody else, because this is my second round of questions. Anybody, okay. I just had a couple more thoughts. On your survey, did you ask about barriers to participate, or, you know, like the people that didn't complete the whole week, eight weeks? Were there questions related to, you know, what got in the way of that? And then I also wanted to know about childcare, because I have attended the elementary family academies, and I noticed that, one, I attended, students left with people to do an activity and then came back for part of it. The other one I attended, there was clearly, it was an activity with their grade school students that the families were trying to enact, but there was clearly preschool children there that made it hard for some of the parents that were there to interact with their older kids. And so actually, I was trying to take the preschool one of them with me, because she clearly was making it kind of impossible for the mom to focus on what she was doing with other kids. So is there usually childcare, or how does that work?
There, there is usually childcare, and, but different nights, different topics have a different format. So when there's a presentation, there's always childcare and activities for the children. And there are certain nights, like math night or reading games, where there's stations, where families and kids go through the stations together, and it sounds like that's one of the nights that you've observed. So there might be literacy bingo or something going on, and they work through, they have a passport and work through the stations together, so they're playing the games together.
Yeah, the one that I observed, there was a PowerPoint on there, and they were doing some literacy things just at tables together, the kids and the parents, and then preschoolers were still in there. There wasn't a spot for them. So I don't know, maybe that was an exception.
It may have been. Yeah, and there's also, we provide dinner.
Or maybe they chose not to go there. I don't know. Maybe there was childcare and they weren't in it.
They may have chosen. We've had a couple runners too, where the kids, you know, want to keep running towards mom and dad, so that could have been. And in terms of the question of why parents didn't complete, I don't know. We have weekly evaluations each week and then a summary one, but mostly we would get that information through follow-up phone calls. We have facilitators who, you know, facilitate the three different language groups, and then each week do follow-up phone calls and reminder phone calls to families. And so we would get that information through there. Either they, they, work schedules change, other schedules change, they had a conflict with Boy Scouts, you know, different things like that have come up.
Transportation.
That's, that was my question. Transportation, the bus made me think about barriers, transportation would again be another issue.
Weather was very huge during the weather, during the winter. Weather was very huge during the weather, during the winter.
All right, any, yeah, Tom?
Just to be selfish and speak as a Washburn parent for a moment. Rosalba, as a parent of Washburn, I'm very sad to learn that you are leaving. I think you've done a tremendous job at that school, you have helped foster a community of acceptance. And I think that you're going to be greatly missed. And I think you're going to be fine, you're going to be great over at Valley View, they're getting a great person, but it's sad to see you go. Are you leaving soon or when is this happening?
No, I'm going to be until the end of the school year. I'm going to finish my, my transition. Noe is going, is the new coordinator at Washburn. So I'm just going to train him what to do basically in the role of the family engagement coordinator at Washburn. And I think for next week, I'm going to start preparing my transition with Ben, so.
So thank you very much for your, your hard work at that school.
I love it, it's a passion, thank you.
Well, it shows and everyone knows it, you bring respect to the faculty and the students and the staff and the parents and I think we're all going to miss you, am I right?
You are right.
I will say that although we all know that, and Noe said it himself, that he has some big shoes to fill. He's come highly recommended and he has done this work before for Chaska and Chaska High School and has articulated knowledge of the position and how to do this work very well. And we were pretty blown away by his interview and he continues to impress us. So I'd love for you to get a chance to meet him soon as well in that transition.
All right, great. Well, I, before you all leave, I just want to say thank you so much for coming and for this information. I want to say thanks to Rick, Suzanne, Gradius in the back there, Rosalba, Nicole, Rosita, Noe, did I get close to that? And then Carleen, thank you so much for coming and showing support. We appreciate all of the work that you guys have done.
Thank you.
Okay, now, for those of you keeping score, we're going to move to, back to the number two, which was moved to number three spot. And that is the School Board Public Engagement Discussion. Rick, we did something like this two years ago, was this?
I believe it was 2012?
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was my first year on the board.
Right, right. So again, thank you for allowing us to switch. You guys can leave now, you guys don't have to stay.
Well, you can stay if you like, we'd love to have you.
The, the reason is, is that, you know, 2012 or 2013 when we last did this, well, let me pop up the first one. You know, what we want to try and do is identify strategies for how best to model community engagement and develop an understanding of the school board's role for engaging the public. I believe Ms. Bartolata and Mr. Sorum were the only two school board members when we last did this. And what it was intended to do was to have a conversation. And that's what I, my hope is tonight is have a conversation among board members. I will simply facilitate the conversation because your feedback tonight will help shape the outline of the school board's engagement plan. In fact, let me share with you, this was the school board's community engagement plan from the work that we did in 2012. And you'll see the various different school board roles. We identified them as traditional advisory and then situational. Traditional, those things that were pretty regular, if not weekly or bi-weekly, is monthly at a minimum. Advisory, all of you serve on various different advisory committees. Those will not necessarily go away. In fact, we're probably adding more with the Pathways Committee as part of the World's Best Workforce effort. And then situational roles, which come up from time to time based on whether it's policies or the strategic plan through those success measures, so on and so forth. Special, special tasks or initiatives like the boundaries and things of that nature. So this is what the old one looked like. But we thought as, as the board developed its most recent school board goals and various conversations you've had over the last two months and discussions at the previous retreat and then since, the school board, you all came up with a goal to review and update your community engagement plan. And so in working with the Chair and Superintendent Fujitaki, we thought that it would be advantageous for us to tonight have a conversation that will help develop a draft, if you will, of the board's community engagement plan. It will be, then be turned over to you to review, revise, have the conversations to eventually adopt that plan that becomes your personal guide to public engagement efforts in the community. Community engage, the board's community engagement is really twofold. It's not only yours as a board, your role as a school board, but also individually. So tonight what we're going to talk about, or what I'm going to facilitate a conversation, I'm going to have a series of questions that's going to lead us down the road to hopefully identify what is community engagement? What, what does a community engagement plan look like? What is a community engagement, why is a community engagement plan important? And those two questions will be answered hopefully with your responses to the next set of questions. So I'm going to pose a question. I would, I would respectfully ask that you all do not approach it as an interview, but that you have a conversation among each other. Ms. Bunkholdt and I will be taking notes that will, as I said, help to, help us to outline a draft plan that we will come back to you with and kind of turn it over to you and guide you in that work. Does that work?
Works for me.
Okay. So how are you currently engaging your public?
All right, you're looking for just anyone to go first?
Anyone to go first.
Anyone wants to, I have my list, but.
I think like was on the previous slide or two back maybe, is through all the committees. We have the Curriculum Advisor Committee, we have community members on that at large. I think like Bloomington United for Youth, that's community members. And so I know, that's one way that we certainly do. It's more of a probably formal way of doing it, but the other ones are your typical community engagement, you know, when we participate and go to games, athletic events, concerts, choirs, you know, meeting people at the, at church or the grocery store or out in the community, you know, just talking, you know. It's, the longer we've been in office, the more people know us. And then all of a sudden stop us on the street or whenever, you know, to talk. And then that's a form of engagement where we might answer them a question, answer their question, or we might ask them a question about what's happening to them. So I think that in an informal way.
I, I'll go next. I just jotted down a few of them. One of the ways that you might not think that we're engaging our public is these meetings, school board study session. I know that there, even though it's ten after nine, there's still people watching. We had a pancake breakfast that was, that was a new way to engage public. PTA meetings, coming, showing yourself. Jim, you mentioned what I wrote down as casual conversation in our community. Interaction in the schools, just being there, showing up pretty soon. They see your face, they understand that you're a board member and oh, that's what you look like. You know, I've heard your name, but now I see your face. Student council, that was a, that was a blast. And I'm kicking myself for waiting so long to find that opportunity to engage them. Also volunteering. That's just a few that, when I, when I saw this, a few ideas of what I'm sure we'll find are many tonight. Yeah, Nellie?
Yeah, I was going to say almost the same, no, not the same. But yeah, through all the different opportunities that we provide to keep them informed, like the meetings, like, you know, it is going on TV, like the Bloomington Pages publication. Just by having our emails available to people to contact us anytime and our phone numbers. And all different types of activities that we attend and we, you know, talk to people, same thing everybody else is saying.
So I mean, as a facilitator, I'm going to ask probing questions based on what I heard because we're, I heard formal and informal opportunities. Formal, more advisory committees, school board meetings, school board study sessions. More informal would be various different activities, whether it's a game, whether it's the board-sponsored pancake breakfast, PTA meetings. Mr. Bergstrom, you talked about just going to your school. All of you are assigned to a number of schools and showing up. So the follow-up question would be, what does that engagement look like when you just show up? So those informal opportunities, Mr. Sorum said you'll have people that will, may recognize you as a school board member and want to twist your arm to on your ear a little bit about whatever issue that is. But when you go to a school or you go to these events, how, how do you engage your public? How are you engaging your public, if at all?
I mean, like go to the carnivals and eat and, and go around and make sure you visit them.
But that's one way. You, you know, the, the engagement, at least from my perspective, when I go, I try and offer an opportunity to say, for instance, have a board member come to whatever event the school is, is putting on. And it could be something like second grade art project. And, and the teacher just doesn't, maybe isn't used to seeing that opportunity from, coming from a board member. And here's something that, that, you know, they can come and, and we can interact with these kids. I don't mind getting down on my knees. Something like a fifth grade band. My inbox is, this is the, I've been on the board two years and then four months and my inbox is consistently getting more and more full with, with smaller venue invitations that didn't exist before. And it took, it took some time for me to, I think, to earn their trust that I would show up, that I, that I would make myself available. So that's one way that I know to engage the, the, the staff at the schools and then through the staff, the students.
Others?
I think that's a good question, it's something that I sometimes struggle with because, you know, I go to a lot of events, but I don't typically walk up to people and say, hi, I'm Tom, I'm on the school board. So usually it's usually initiated either by someone else, like maybe a principal say, oh, this is Tom Bennett on the school board or a friend or of a friend type thing where they might recognize me. So that's the, the part that I struggle with is like, okay, I don't want to be the guy just going around saying I'm on the school board. And so how do we get to that point?
So let me, not to put you on the spot, but I think at the state of the city event, I introduced you to one of our parents and then you, you had a conversation. So do you see that as engagement? And then not to get into the details of the conversation you had, but what is, when you're introduced by a principal or someone, what is that, what is that leading to now that they know that you're a school board member?
Well, it depends, you know, some people might have a question, want to ask, talk to me about certain things or they'll just might say, you know, good to meet you and, and you know, just have a casual conversation about our kids or something like that. It all depends, but, yeah, I don't typically, when I go to, like, when I go to events at my own school, I don't wear like, you know, my school board thing, so.
Why not?
Because I'm, when I'm at my own kid's school, I kind of feel I'm a parent and it's kind of weird how I'm, how I'm, I'm also the ambassador of the school that my kids go to, so it's kind of, I don't know.
Makes you feel weird, doesn't it?
It does feel weird. Should I wear this or where I go when I, when I go to my own kid's school?
I'm with you, Tom, when I go to the school, I make myself invisible, I say, you know, I'm, I'm just Rick today.
But do you rep, are you the ambassador of Ridgeview? No, no, Jim is, right?
Yeah, he never shows up.
Yeah, I don't think he knows where to test.
I'm sure glad.
I'm sorry, I'm peacing a seemingly.
Really, people, I do go out and I do go to the schools.
It's difficult to do and I understand where you're coming from. It's hard to, to, to go into a, to a building and then feel as though you're talking about yourself.
Especially for a shy person like myself.
And that'll, that'll come with practice, a couple more, a couple more meetings, a couple more sessions.
Director Steigoff and then Director Corman.
One of the things that I do when I go to the schools that I ambassador to is I, for instance, at the early childhood dance at Pond, I put myself in the spot where I'm volunteering at the concession table so that I see lots of people that come by and so that I can visit with parents, can visit with the kids, you know, rather than just be walking around. If I, if I find, if I try to take a volunteer spot, then that also helps me meet more people.
Well, I was going to say that, you know, when you engage, when you're in that engagement situation, it's, you are committed to something, you are committed to our, to our constituents, you know? So every single thing that we do, we're already engaging. We are going to those trainings, we're attending the meetings, we're reading our materials, you know, we are going to different events, we are thinking about the kids, et cetera. You know, there's many different ways that we are already engaging ourselves. You know, we're, we're doing our job, I, I think that's.
Let me, let me ask that you provide a specific, because you're right, you're, you're.
Right.
You're engaging by, by going to training and those kinds of things, you're getting more knowledge, more education about that.
I'm serving my.
So how do you serve your, how do, serving and engaging is two things. How are you engaging your public more specifically?
From the outside this way, you mean then?
Correct, because engagement is two-way.
Right. Well, you know, like everybody else does, but the interesting thing is when you go to an event and you introduce yourself as a school board member, sometimes you get the answer of what is that and who are you? You know, what's, what does that mean? That doesn't really mean anything to me. So that's, that's when you have to get into the process of explaining exactly what it means. And then, you know, that superintendent also comes into the conversation because people need to understand exactly how everything works. So, yeah.
I just wanted, oh, I'm sorry, I just wanted to back up and, and, because we're talking a lot about people that are at our schools, involved in our schools. But when we're talking about engaging the public, we have a much broader group of people that are very passionate about schools in Bloomington, very much care about our schools. If you look at the group of volunteers that worked on the referendum committee, many did not have children in our schools. And so, you know, seventy percent, probably. And that's our public too. And I just want to make sure that, you know, and those are the, I think, Jim hit on that, you know, some of those you see at the store, you see at church, wherever, you see them in other community events. Sure, you might see them at a ballgame too, but you see them outside of school events. And I think that's another important piece. And those are the people that we really, you know, we want to bring into our schools too, you know, and have them feel involved.
Director Steigoff was a great transition to the, who are they? Because it's easy to identify those parents who, to engage in them. But she brings up a great point, what about the seventy to seventy-five percent that don't have children in school?
Well, and we, and we met four of us who were out there last, last fall and we met an awful lot of them. And you introduced yourself then and you said, I'm Tom Bennett, I'm running for school board, I'm Jim Sorum, I'm running for school board. And so then they would ask you certain questions and you had to force, you know, you were engaging. You were trying to tell them what you wanted to do if elected. So I said, that's the same game that you can play all the time now when you go into the schools. We had a discussion with the MSBA where somebody said, well, I'm, my son plays soccer and I'm on the soccer booster club, but I'm also on the school board. And how do I handle that? You know, and he said, well, you can't be quiet, but you, they said, well, I want to just wear my parent hat. Well, I just want to, you can't just wear your parent hat because everybody knows you're on the school board. So when you go to a booster club meeting or when you go into your own kid's school, you know, people are going, oh, hey, you have the same name as that little kid down the street. What, what are you? And when you say, well, I'm his parent or I'm his grandparent, whatever it is. So you always have that role and we are twenty-four seven. So there's no, there's no need not to be proud that you're a school board member. So when you do talk to some of the public and, and as we have, and maybe I'm just saying it because I'm more experienced and seasoned at doing some of this stuff, but it's the idea that you are engaging all of these people and you should be willing to say, hey, I'm Jim Sorum, I'm a new member of the board and I hear, what's, what's your problem or something like that? But who, who the people are is, you know, your next door neighbor. And everybody, everybody's next door neighbor now says, what's happening or you're spending too much.
Director Bartolata?
I agree. If anybody that, anybody that lives in New York, it's our public.
And she has a great opportunity where she works part-time.
Well, if everyone is a public, how do you, but do you engage them differently? Do you expect them to come to you or do you go to them? Do you expect them to ask you about the school board of the school, school district? Or do you try to seek out that information?
Personally, I think when people find out that I'm on the school board, if they have an issue or a question, they're very willing to. an issue or a question, they're very willing to ask it. And, you know, if I know people who have small children or if I know, you know, "How's your school experience?" You know, if you run out of things to talk about. So, you know, it can go both ways.
I, I think you do both because people will approach you, but I also, if there's things coming up, I like to, you know, I like to check in with people I know in the community and ask them, "So, what do you think about this? What do you think about that?" You know, like I asked them about, I asked a lot of people in the community about keeping study sessions televised. You know, I asked a lot of people, my neighbors, people that I know throughout the community and, you know, just to try to get feedback from that.
Do all of you do that?
Mm-hmm.
To some extent. I think, you know, one of the things, one of the reasons why I think a lot of the community doesn't engage with us is because they don't think that what they have to say makes any difference. Because I know when I was on the campaign trail, knocking doors, and a lot of people say, "Oh, well, I don't really pay attention to school board because I don't have kids in school." And so, my response was always, "Yeah, but you pay taxes, right?" And they say, "Yeah, why?" And I said, "Well, because you realize that the school board has a lot of authority, we can raise and lower your taxes." And they say, "Oh, tell me more about this," right? And so, I, I think a lot of times we get focused on parents because those are the ones that are most involved because they want their interest in policy things. But there's a lot more issues at stake. You know, good schools can raise property values, you know, build strong communities, you know, strong schools build strong communities, strong communities, you know, thrive, have better jobs, so on and so forth. So, I think, you know, to some extent, we, even though a lot of times if people find out I'm on the school board and they have kids, then they're really engaged. But I think a lot of times people say, "Oh, you're on the school board," and they don't give it a second thought because they don't realize that anything that we do actually affects them. Maybe we need to do more in that area.
Yeah, so you raise an interesting perspective because if seventy to seventy-five percent of our citizens don't have children in school, there's a belief or perception, at least there's a disconnect then. And you, what I hear you saying, Rick, is that you're trying to make the connection for them.
Right. Well, you figure, there's roughly sixty thousand registered voters and approximately twelve thousand voted in the school board election. So, forty-eight thousand, you know, people decide to stay home when it's a school board election versus a presidential election where the majority of people will show up to vote. And so, it's because in that case, they think it matters and it, and when the reality is their vote counts less in that election than it does in ours.
Well, I just think that the seniors in our community are very well-informed, very
well-connected. And I think the group that you're talking about, maybe the forty-somethings that, you know, they got a million things going on and, and voting is not at the top of their list, you know? But I think as far as who's engaged in the, in the community, the seniors are probably even more engaged than the parents because they have the time to sit down and read school pages. So, they have, you know what I mean? Or their kids went through Jefferson or Kennedy and so they're still connected to that part of the community.
You know, Rick, if I can jump in here, when I saw this, this question, who are they, I wanted to look up the, the accurate numbers for how many folks that live here in Bloomington. It's eighty-five thousand, six hundred and something. And I would, I was tempted to put that number down there. I mean, it's every, every citizen from the toddlers that I see over at the farmer's market rolling, you know, being pushed in the, in the strollers to the parents or grandparents that are pushing them. Part of the conversation that I'm seeing, I will get grandparents who, when I, when they hear my name, first of all, they're, they're from a generation that need to stereotype you very quickly by knowing your last name. "Oh, you're Scandinavian." "Oh, you're Swedish." "Okay, well, now I can talk to you." I must look scary, but they want to know my last name. You know, "You gave my grandson or my granddaughter their diploma. How do you know that? You know, how did you?" And so, that's my conversation. "Oh, that was great, you know, it was fun to see them up there. Where did, where were you sitting?" "Oh, I was way back by this camera." And, and those conversations, they're happening more and more frequently for me. So, there are, they, they do supply the icebreaker oftentimes. And, and other times I'll, I'll do the best I can to break the ice, but...
Director Corman?
Yeah, well, you know, before I forget, I forgot to say that one of the ways that we also engage our public is through forums like the one that we have or legislative committee. That's, that's another way of keeping our public informed. But who are they, you know? I will say the same, you know, it's, it's every single person in, in Bloomington, but we get to hear more, I guess, from parents and students and also staff. You know, they're part of that public too. It's the staff in the schools.
Talk about internal stakeholders and external stakeholders. I want to go back to something that Director Oliva said. If, if voting is a measure of good engagement, at least from the perspective of those folks going to the polls and either supporting referendum or in some cases, supporting individual school board members, are we missing, like you said, Director Oliva, there's sixty thousand registered voters and twelve thousand voted. So, there's a large percentage of folks that we say, they certainly drive if they vote the outcomes, but are, if we're not engaging them, are we missing out? Are we, are we losing a faction of our community to help us understand what we're doing? And the reason I ask that, because that's forty thousand, if I do my math, thirty-eight thousand people that are ambassadors of the school district just by virtue of living in the community.
That's a possibility.
So, it's easy to identify who are our publics and how do we know? I think you've sort of answered that. But if, but if we're all to all, how do we truly know we're engaging our public?
I almost forgot, our friends are, are public too.
How are you engaging them though? It's one thing to identify, it's one thing to, if I can respectfully share, informing a public is, doesn't necessarily mean it's an engaged public. They have knowledge, but engaged public is ones that are going to vote, so they take an action, or they're a public that's going to give you feedback. So, how are we engaging our partners? Because I think it's a great point.
Some, some of the friends I'm already acquainted with and stop in and it's, for me, it's casual conversation, it's a preferred style. But that's an individual board member. How do we engage them collectively, you know, other than recognizing, recognizing their, their fine work?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point. You know, there are probably, how are you currently engaging your public? I mean, collectively, we, we host forums or we do a variety of things, or we should do more, or we should visit the Creekside, or we should do some of that. But I, I personally feel I want to leave visiting Creekside up to the superintendent because he's got all the answers. So, some of these guys put you on the spot, you know, you're just want to shrink into a corner and say, "I'll, I'll talk to you tomorrow" or something like that because they're, but, but individually, you know, how do we, how do we engage and, I mean, that's almost on a, on a personal, on a daily basis where we go and interact and so forth like that and then try and, and engage more than just, "Hi, how are you?" Walking down the street, you know, it's, you know, a little bit more than that. But, but I think do we need to define collectively as a board or just individually?
Well, I think several of you identified informal, formal, and then, as remember, when we started, we, individual as well as collectively as a board. A formal board engagement might be a forum, might be the school board meeting. An informal would be the pancake breakfast. You're up, you're a school board, you're collectively as a group engaging your community for anyone that, that, that comes and shows up. Individually, you probably do that more frequently because of the number of events that you all go to. So, with that, now, thinking ahead to your community engagement plan, what's your best hopes? Love to hear from all of you on this. What's your best hopes?
Increase, I'm sorry to interrupt. I, I just wrote down increased communication backslash understanding. And then, those are hopefully ambiguous enough that we can fill in with a whole bunch of adjectives.
That's why I'm not going to press you on those more. Director Corman?
I would hope to provide the community with more opportunities to communicate with us, but for us to listen.
Okay. These are good because this, these are door openers when you start to develop this to answer the question of how do you get more increased communication involvement? How do you, what are those opportunities for more engagement? Others? Love to hear from all of you on this one. Your best hopes. Director Bartolata?
I would hope that people become more informed, better informed. Getting back to what Rick said about voters, you know, you can look at it two ways. One is that they're satisfied with the way the district is run. And so, they say, "Let it continue," you know, but they, they don't want to get involved for that reason, that they're, they're happy with how it is, I think, you know? Or, on the other hand, you have the people that are dissatisfied, you know? So, sometimes when you have a big turnout, it might be because they're not happy with, you know, the boundaries or issues that you have. So, that was one thing. But as far as hopes, that's what I'd hope for, a better informed community.
Director Bennett?
Yeah, I think my hope would be that we build on what we started with, with the pancake breakfast and we have more of those and that's routine and not just a once every two or three years type thing, but we're doing several a year and we're also giving, having forums, maybe even like a town hall type setting where people can come in, ask questions and express their concerns about the school district and those type of things. That's what I'd like to see.
Director Steiglott?
Well, what I think of most is what I heard when we went to the World's Best Workforce presentation is when someone summarized it as putting the public into public education. And that's when I, when we have that forum and we start doing this, that's what I hope we see. I want to see our public engaged and working and, you know, volunteering with our youth and in our schools. And I want to see our public, you know, have ownership of, of the great schools and, and this great community. I mean, I, when I was out on the campaign trail, there were a lot of people that were still, their kids graduated, you know, thirty years ago and were still very much, we have good schools in this community and very proud of that. And I want to see that continue. And I just want to see the public be involved in, in our schools in all aspects.
Director Oliva?
One of the things I'd hope for is a better informed board. So, getting their feedback, you know, I, I feel to some extent, we're elected to build the school district that the community wants. And how do we do that if we don't know what the community wants? We have ideas, you know, we campaigned, but once again, only one in five people actually told us what they wanted. So, by engaging with, you know, with our partners, you know, if we never hear from the library, we don't know what we can do to help partner li- with library. And it, it was sort of like the idea with the Youth of Iger Committee is, what I told the kids, I said, "We sit here and we say, 'Here's what we think they need,' but if they just say, 'No, this is actually what we need,' then it's easier for us to take action."
During the campaign trail, Rick and I were at the same house at the same time on, in one of the streets. And the guy had a chance to really tell us what he thought. He loved the schools and he thought they were doing great. And he preferred Kennedy, I think it was, rather than Jefferson because his schools weren't there. But he said, "You have to do more. You just have to do more." And so, then, that's when I left, you know, and I was going to let Rick stay there and take over. But, but it was the idea that, that having enough people out there, kind of like Dawn says, you know, that, that do know. So, I, I would kind of like to see, best hope of informed public and an informed board, but I'd like to see regular, regular quarterly meetings or something like that if we have certain topics that we can, that we can talk about instead of waiting for a change in boundaries or a change in the sixth period day or a change in the school where we know we're going to get a lot of engagement that way, but be able to have some formalized, some formally informal, regular sessions to, to deal with them in various locations, be it at Creekside or be it at Town, City Hall or wherever.
How do you, how do you engage then an apathetic community that by and large believes their school system is very, very good? I mean, all the surveys point to a very good school system by our community. Support of referendums, all but two thousand and one. They have passed just every referendum. We have not cut a lot like other school districts. So, the sense of urgency, as you say, Director Sorm, like with boundaries, it may not necessarily be there. And so, it makes more of a challenge, it appears.
Well, I think that's where your, your own personal reinteractions with people comes into play, you know, that, because they are, people are busy, you know? And a good school district is well-run and nobody, it's not at the top of their list of priorities. So, I think that that's where the people that you talk to every day, that's how you get to know what's bubbling up at Poplar Bridge or what's bubbling up at, you know, Washburn or, you know, what's a concern in the community about the schools. That's why you got to, you know, I, I like the big forums and pancake breakfast and stuff, but even the pancake breakfast, how many people, you know, a hundred, a hundred and fifty people? This is a big community, you know? We didn't re, and, and most of the, I hate to say it, but most of the people there were people that we all knew.
Yeah, we invited personally.
You know, we didn't really, I mean, and it was great and I didn't mind that, but, you know, they were friends. So, it's the people that we don't, that aren't our friends that we really need to reach, you know, in a high age to do that.
Okay?
Just like, this is related to early childhood, but it's kind of an example. And then, they showed up here and they were doing it. But, you know, I was thinking about, you know, there's this whole group of children that we are not reaching yet that are not getting, they're not ready for kindergarten. And what do we do to do that? And one of the things I thought, you know, was, you know, we need to have information in all of their faith where they go for worship and on all the different faiths throughout the city to say, you know, "This is what a quality early childhood looks like." And then, certainly after that, there was a presentation where one of our churches had early childhood people come and speak about that. But those are the types of things that I'm thinking we could, we could engage people. People, a lot of people would, would be more engaged, but they're not asked because they don't know what, especially we have a lot of retirees. A lot of them, if they're asked and know what they could do, I think they would be engaged.
It sort of goes back to what Director Oliva was saying, goes beyond just those twelve thousand that are voting.
And I think, I think Radius had a tremendous presentation. You were, she was at St. Cloud too, I'm sure it was the same one. Well, you started out and you mention it, and then you mention it again and you're invite, then you re-invite, and then you just invite. And then finally, you know, it starts out, maybe it's twenty people, but then eventually, you know, and all of a sudden it becomes forty people as they start talking about some of the things like that too. So, I think it's that, that repetition or that, you know, promotion that, that we have to do, especially when we have something like pathways.
Any other best hopes? Any other best hopes?
Over, overcoming apathy.
I like the pause. I like the pause.
I, I put, I just put simply unable to connect.
How's that look? Be more specific if you can.
Oh, well, I was kind of hoping we could take the shovel and start filling that in, but, you know, I think everybody, what I'm hearing is everyone at some point has touched on, "I, I spoke to this person," or "I spoke to that person," or "I spoke to that person." And how, how do I start that conversation? You, you know, you can tell when people are, are watching versus listening. And, and maybe I'm, I'm just really, really boring to listen to, but occasionally I get that glazed overlook when somebody just wants to go. And, and if you extrapolate, and, and maybe that's not one person, but a group of people that just, you know what, my life is going well and I, and I, things are going good and I'll come to you when they're not. And so, how do you, how do you cut through that and how do you make that connection in a way that's, that's appealing, but, but sort of not overly pushy or forceful?
I would say my worst fear is that we start losing the support in our community. I mean, yes, the referendum last fall passed, but it just barely passed. So, what does that say for the next referendum if we don't build support in our community and start engaging people and informing them of our schools and getting them on board with what we're doing here? with what we're doing here, and getting their support? So, yeah, I'm kind of fearful that we start failing referendums, and we got to start making cuts, and we start losing what we value in the city.
So maybe the question, going back to what Director Bertram said, is that what you all get to chew on, and is to, when you start, when you start losing support, or you discuss start losing support, what does that look like, and how do we counter it? Because you never want to get to that point, right?
Well, it looks like a referendum's failing. I mean, that's a, a big indicator of losing support, unless voters and, you know, I think that's what it looks like.
Right, so, so as Director Bertram said, is what, eventually you need to talk about as a board, is what do we need to do so we never get to that point? Other worst fears?
Well, it should be like what Director Bartolata said, it could backfire. You know, you could have a room full of people saying, "The earth is flat," and we're saying, "No, seriously, we've been there, it, it keeps going all the way around until you get back through," and they say, "No, the earth is flat." And so, you could find yourself underneath a, an immense amount of pressure from the community, that's contrary to what the experts who've studied it are saying, and then that puts you in a spot where you're saying, "Okay, well, what do we do? Do we go with what the community does, even though we think it might be not the, the correct direction?" So that would be, you know, I think that's a serious consideration. Um, I don't know that we, that it would happen, but there was a time when everybody in the world knew that the earth was flat.
Great point. Director Skywah, Director Corman, Director Sorm?
I'm still, I'm still worried about the flat earth.
You mean it is?
No, I've been there, it keeps going.
He was there when I was there.
Yeah, I was there. They fin, they finally figured it out.
They have pictures, right?
Well, the, the, the asp, the aspect that we continually ask for more, and more, and more, you know, that at some point, and there's a lot of them, referendum and others, saying, "Hey, enough is enough, we've given you people," all of this sort of stuff. So some of the stuff is out of our control, but one of the worst fears is, you know, that all of a sudden, it's just going to be, the, the, we'll have ninety, ten percent, and the ninety percent are just really going to tell us, "Hey, this is enough." It's kind of depressing to think about that, but, but you know, that, that is a, that is a worst fear, that, that finally the rebellion, or whatever it is, is going to happen, or the state stops funding.
I'll sleep well tonight, thank you.
Yeah. I think, I think along with that, though, is, I think the, the fear is that if you lose community support, if we start seeing student achievement drop, and we start, I think that's the, the bigger thing, and always making that we, making sure that we're doing absolutely the best we can to see that every student succeeds. And if you lose community support, how do we keep doing that?
Great point. Any other worst fears?
I don't know, I don't know if it's a worst fear, but I think a, a fear is, uh, that status quo, that we continue the way we're going. I mean, and I'll talk to people, and I'll talk, and I'll say I'm on the school board, and they'll say, "Oh, really? What school?" You know, it's, I mean, just their, their lack of understanding what the school board does, and their role in the community.
I, I think one of my fears would be not to be aware of what our community really needs, or what our community really expects from us, to let, to let the public down, um, and, I don't know, um, let's see that.
That's, that's a good point. If we, as a board, become too complacent, and that...
That we don't see what, what's needed, you know, that we put our own interest, you know, on top. And also that we are using our, the dollars wisely, that's another one, because that's a big one, you know? The programs, and here, and there, and there, but, you know, money's money, and can't go spending it just like that, right? And we are very accountable for that part. So that would be a fear, that we end up not spending wisely somewhere, and then that we get accountable for that, if they get somebody.
Certainly is one way to hear from the public, if...
Right, definitely.
...we're spending it incorrectly.
Any other? Okay, before I go back, go to the final slide, um, whoops, I want to throw these two back up to you, that, um, you all, you, you all gave great insights, um, probably the, the two highlights were those best hopes and worst fears, because they posed questions. You all posed questions for yourselves to think about. So, I will challenge you, that when we come back to you with the draft plan, and certainly these notes, um, but in the interim, think about these two questions. What is a community engagement plan, and what, and why is it important? Because many of the things that you posed tonight really feed back into those two. There are some school boards that don't believe community engagement plan is necessary, that it's just simply, "Doing my job as a school board member, and when I talk to people, I talk to people." Or they, we expect them to show up at a school board meeting or study session. And then, why is it important? So, asking those two questions, as you reflect back on tonight, and then when you get these notes and the draft plan, will help you to dig deeper into all of these questions that you participated in, okay? So with that, next steps. We are going to, and I think Debunkel, who are taking notes, and I, we will pull these together, we're going to share with these notes with you, um, based on those questions we asked. We hope to bring back you late next month, or early June, a draft school board community engagement plan. Then it's your work, because you will take that, and you will review it, revise it, ultimately, or eventually adopt the community engagement plan. When we first put this together, I had June up there, but it may take a little bit longer. It may take you some time, because it is, uh, hard work, and I will, I've got to say that this board, um, is doing a really good job of trying to identify itself as more engaged with its community and its individual constituents. So you may wish to take more time, but ultimately, it's the board adopts it, if they so choose, that becomes your norm to implement the community engagement plan. And again, it's not only going to be collectively, but individually, what, how do you see and what you see your role in that, okay? With that, any other questions that you have of me?
Um, the community engagement plan, and will that have some, uh, tasks, goals, and some of those? I mean, are we going to add more to that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll draw you back to your goal, number four, is to, um, review and update school board's community engagement plan. Tonight, we're really doing that first metric, goals update for the board's engagement plan, where you are participating in a discussion to help outline the draft plan. If you look at your other two metrics, you are establishing the plan and whatever goals you want with that plan. So if I could give you one suggestion, it may be, um, when Chairman Bertram talks about the pancake breakfast, if you expand that to two events a year, or three events a year, you, that's, as I said, that might be the informal, you look at formal, those are the kinds of things, and, and we will help you through that. But I will lean more on you, or I, I really, administration will take more of a back seat to this, and allow you now to take your words, your concepts, and shape and form your plan.
I just wanted to make sure, um, another important part of the community that, I mean, we talked about them a little bit, but I don't think we really made sure that they're included, is I want to make sure that our students are included in this, and make sure that they have a voice in it, and, and make sure that, um, you know, they feel that, um, you know, this community is interested in them. Um, especially, um, that same survey, it said twelve percent think that the community cares about them. That was amazing.
And again, that, that, I will challenge you then...
Ninth grader.
...at that point, to what are those, that is an audience.
Yeah, exactly.
So, thank you. Any other questions, before we wrap for the night? I thank you for your time, folks, and I really appreciate your insights, I appreciate the fact that you dialogue. It is always easier for a facilitator when there is, when there's conversation and dialogue, as opposed to a facilitator just sitting here and asking questions like an interview. So my hat's off to you, I thank you, I appreciate the opportunity, Director, or Chairman Bertram, and we're back to you.
Great, thanks so much, Rick, I appreciate your help and all with this. Uh, I think this is an important part of what we, what we need to do, and, and the work that we have upcoming. Um, just real quickly, if anyone has, uh, you know, on the way home, they're going to go, "Oh, why didn't I say that?" I'm sure you can email them over to Rick.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I think we'll call then, this, um, study session to a close.